Great. Welcome, everybody, to our August 26, 2025 Board of Education meeting here in beautiful Matthew Patterson Elementary School. I would like to move right to 1.02 and ask Ms. Stevens for row call.
Thank you. Vice President Curzio.
Present.
Trustee Douglas.
Present.
Trustee Grasso.
Present.
Trustee Magliano.
Present.
President Orser.
Present.
Trustee Torpe is not coming tonight, and Trustee Wise.
Present.
Thank you.
And we have our ex-officio student, Arav, is here tonight.
Present.
Thank you. Excellent. Okay. 1.03. May the Board of Education recess into executive session for the purpose of receiving legal guidance on collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law with respect to the CARMEL Office Staff Association, the CARMEL Administration Association, and matters exempt from open meetings law. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We will be recessing into executive session, and we should be returning about 7 o'clock. Thank you. All right. Thank you, everybody. And we are moving right along to 1.04. If you can all stand while we do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Moving right along to 1.05, new and good. I can start. Myself and Trustee Magliano had a wonderful new and good. We had building tours of all three elementary schools and our transportation department this evening. And I want a big shout out to all of our staff that has been working all summer long to beautify and just take the love and the care that they have for our buildings and grounds is top-notch. Everything was really functional and clean and bright and best interest of kids and just a lot of new projects, and it was really nice. And I really just wanted to say what a wonderful time we had, and we thank the staff and our superintendent for taking us and our assistant superintendent of business for driving us. And it was wonderful. Anybody else, a new and good?
I have the kindergarten, our annual kindergarten, Ride the Bus night was last night, and all of our administrators at the elementary school and our cabinet, as well as the PPS department rode the bus with our students, and it was amazing. And it really showed us, as I said today, to the new teachers during our new teacher orientation, it really shows and demonstrates the trust that our families give us by, you know, having their students with us, and what a privilege it is to be able to take care of the students within this district.
Before we move on to open session, I am going to ask Vice President Curzio to take the mic, and we have a few words from the district that we would like to address the passing of our beloved Sheriff McConville.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, on behalf of the Carmel Central School District Board of Education, we pause to recognize and honor the life and legacy of Sheriff Kevin McConville, who recently passed away after a long and courageous health battle. I had the privilege of knowing Kevin McConville long before he was our county sheriff. He served more than 30 years with the Metropolitan Transportation Authority Police Department, rising to the rank of chief. He was subsequently elected as our Putnam County Sheriff in November of 2021. Sheriff McConville was always a steadfast supporter and a true friend of our school district. In countless situations, he extended his partnership, his guidance, and his care to our students, staff, and families. He approached every interaction with respect and a deep sense of commitment to the well-being of others. Mr. McConville was not only an outstanding sheriff dedicated to protecting and serving the people of Putnam County, but also a man of profound service and compassion. He believed in community, he believed in education, and he believed in supporting those around him in meaningful ways. Our entire school district community is grateful for the sheriff's leadership over the past four years, his friendship, and his unwavering support. In his honor, flags on school district property will be lowered to half-mast beginning tomorrow and lasting through Friday of this week. The sheriff's funeral will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, August 27, at 11:00 a.m. Our Lady of Loretto Church, located at 24 Fair Street in Cold Spring. Burial will follow at the Cold Spring Cemetery on Peak Scale Road in Cold Spring. As a school district and as a board, we extend our deepest condolences to Sheriff McConville's family, colleagues, and friends. May God continue to give them strength, and may the sheriff's memory continue to inspire us to serve with the same dedication and kindness he so fully embodied. We ask that our community continue to keep Sheriff McConville's family, including his wife Janice and their children, his many friends, and the entire Putnam County Sheriff's Department, in your thoughts and prayers during this difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on, 1.06, we have open session. Ms. Stevens, is there anybody that would like to address the board?
We have two people signed up so far. Frank DeGrazio.
I'm sorry, I forgot your name from the last meeting.
Jim Wise.
Jim. You said that your son played football. Did he play football at Carmel?
Yes, freshman football.
Oh, he just played freshman. He didn't play on the varsity. Okay. And what year was that?
I'd have to go back and do the math, 2016 or '17.
Okay. That's fine. I do have a question. What's the protocol in this district for getting something through athletics approved, as in a camp, a summer league, clinics? I know there's stuff that goes on all year. What's our procedure? What has to be done?
So we can answer you if we have the answers during board comments, but during open session, we will allow you to ask the questions.
Okay. Well, I'd like that answer because that's important. The first camp, this is another question. The first camp that the football team went to, was that approved? Because they did attend a camp this summer.
Again, I'm sorry, if we have the answer, we'll answer during board comments.
Okay. The second camp, I've seen transportation thrown up as a smokescreen. We have a nice little form from our athletic director that we sign to give transportation to and from athletic events if we need to. We've transported kids before to camps, seven-on-sevens, games when they have a school, something with the school. And this actually negates state control of 8537, and it says that underscores the use of public school resources for non-sponsored may constitute unconstitutional gift of public Transportation, we would have taken care of that, wouldn't have gone against that. That was given in an email from this board to a parent. The same opinion, 8537. Offseason practices, camps are allowed if they're not mandated by coaches. Our camps aren't mandated by coaches. Our coaches provide an opportunity for our student athletes to get better. They provide this as an opportunity for all the students to participate in football. They have spring practices that is open to everybody. These camps are open to everybody. And this opinion, 8537, says it's only recommended that school equipment is not to be used. I am close, personal friends with a superintendent that is on our schedule. When I told him that the district said we couldn't use equipment, and how does his district get around the three camps he sent his teams to? He basically laughed and said, "It's a recommendation." Every team on our schedule has been to at least two camps, some practicing more than once a day, while all our kids had to sit home for over a month. Again, camp's always been accessible to every kid. We were told that this Board of Ed told us that the kids can go, they just had to supply their own helmet and shoulder pads. That's not accessible to all, because I don't know any parent that's just going to whip out about $900 for equipment to send their kid to a camp. Meanwhile, we have equipment that's already been paid for, like laptops, books, and anything else our students use here. Carmel has gone to football camp for a very long time. Now, I came back here after 20 years in 2021. I know they went to camps off-site. There are board members on this board that were on those boards that knew the football team goes to camp during the summer, at least two. Some summers, they attended camp at Carmel, and some summers, they attended camps at other places. One summer, we went to Lakeland and John F. Kennedy. Why was this allowed? I mean, there were interests on those boards to whoever was coaching that team, and there were players on those teams that had parents on the board. You guys got to hear from one of the top athletic directors in the state last week, Mr. Luciano, who is on the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Football Committee, the state committee. He wasn't given any professional courtesy when he asked the question why we couldn't go to camp. That was never answered. Our kids are now at a competitive disadvantage. When you have Yorktown High School that was at three camps, they were practicing that night last week when we were at this board meeting. Football is not something you just pick up and go out and play. It's repetition, like a basketball player's taking shots, a baseball player in the batter's box, a pitcher. They are more than a month behind trying to catch up. You put them at a disadvantage. You put them, also our seniors, my son included, who is competing for roster spots at the Division III level. I don't have film on him. I don't have film to send to college coaches from camp. Meanwhile, guys he's competing with are sending them clips after clip after clip. And my son's not the only one. But you wouldn't know anything about the recruiting. Your legal team in this district, I suggest you get somebody that's familiar with the state high school athletic regulations and Section 1 regulations, because they're giving you bad advice. The guardian caps that we heard Coach Hughes talk about, guardian caps reduce concussions by 33%. They don't void warranties, and who cares about a warranty on a helmet that's only a year? We've had it change the game because it's easier to fix a knee or an ankle. You can't fix what happens up here. My son wears a guardian cap at practice. I would love for somebody to tell him not to wear it. You're liable if you tell a kid, a coach, that they cannot wear guardian caps. You're liable if they get a concussion, because now you are taking a piece of equipment I would like to ask why our head football coach was suspended for two games, again putting our kids at a competitive disadvantage. Where did this suspension come from? Who handed it down? Two coaches in six months that got suspended? Two of your top coaches in this district? Meanwhile, we heard Ms. Williams last week almost in tears about a coach that berated her special needs kid. That's sad. This isn't the NFL, and you're suspending coaches? Good ones? That's how you're going to support a non-tenure teacher in this district? He was threatened and bullied to taking that suspension or his job? Support, that's what you're here for. That's been the MO of this board for the last five or six years, what I've seen. Bullying, but we condemn our kids. In closing, I'm going to read you something that I saw, I think it was today. And this was from somebody who's one of the most respected people in the state. And this person said, "Thank you for your continued support of MAYPAQ schools. At the end of the day, it's about the students. Their safety, their growth, and their success will remain at the center of every decision I make while I have the privilege of serving as your superintendent. Sincerely, Mr. Frank Mealy, Acting Superintendent of Schools, former baseball coach, former football coach, former athletic director." I hope you listen to those words because you, as a board, have failed. You failed these students, athletes. I've seen you fail other students on the videos of these meetings. You failed in their safety, their growth, and their success. You've held back and denied some of these students the opportunity to compete and earn roster spots at the next level. You haven't allowed them to get better. You haven't allowed them to attend practices or camps or work on what they want to work on. Sports are voluntary for our kids. They want to be there. You told them they couldn't. You failed this coaching staff by not supporting them. You failed a head coach who's in his second year as the head coach by not supporting You were condensating the other night, telling those kids how proud you were. They were looking for answers. They were looking for comfort. You failed them. They were just as upset before and after. And I'll be honest with you. Said you couldn't wait to come on Fridays? Do them a favor. Do us a favor. We don't want you there.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens, anyone else?
We have Kristen DeGrazio signed up. Is she?
She's on her way. Train is late.
There's nobody else signed up?
Okay. Is this?
Perfect timing.
Perfect timing.
Good evening. I'm Kristen DeGrazio. I live in Carmel, New York. I'm also a football and baseball parent. I am a New York State Licensed General Casualty Adjuster, and I've been in the industry for 22 years. I work in commercial and construction, as well as specialize in litigation, and that will be important in a minute. Although the BOE canceled the football camps over the summer, on August 23, we were delighted that football practice finally began. The parents were informed that the BOE investigation had been concluded, and Coach Conley was still being punished for whatever had occurred by suspending him for the first two games of the varsity season. Maybe you don't understand or know much about sports, but when you tie the coach's hands by disallowing camps, which is essentially extra practice, extra time, to learn to play the game safely and to get better prior to game time, and remove the leader of their team from games times two, I'm at a loss for any kind of common sense that was applied to this decision. Your intent is to punish Conley, but you're actually hurting the kids. In what way is this best for the kids? They work offseason. They show up when it's hot. They show up when it's cold, when it's raining. They're tired. They show up hungry. They show up injured, and it all seems quite excessive to me. Every decision, as I've said before, should always be measured against the golden rule, what is best for the kids. Now, let's talk about some risk management and legal. I completed a research project last night where I researched some of CCSD's lawsuits for the last 10 years. Now, pay attention because there's going to be a pop quiz at the end. There was one where there was a dispute between a community member and a bus driver. Dismissed. I'm not going to use any names. There was a kid on the bus that had an issue that settled. There's a fall on a playground, eye laceration, settled. An issue between bus drivers, a trip and fall at GFMS, broken wrist, a finger caught in a door, a bus issue with an autistic child, a playground fall with multiple fractures and surgery, a DASSA case, imminent domain regarding a fair street property, and a CHS student who walked into a window was settled. Now, while there are no suits filed in 2003, '24, or '25 yet, there could still be open claims, and I understand that. Those would have been paid through your insurance policy. So here's my quiz. How many of those were playground-related? How many were Department of Transportation-related? Three. How many were sports-related? Zero. One trip and fall is a premise issue and was not involved during the course of the game or sports activities such as practice or camp. And while there are different years where there are no claims, and there are some years with multiple claims, it averages out to one per year. Zero were related to non-school events off-campus, and none were related to any type of sporting event. None were related to the use or lack of use of school-issued equipment that was purchased with tax dollars and fundraising from its community. So my issues tie back to the budget and the money spent. Based on the available information right on the CCDSD website, looking at the line-by-line budget that was available, in 2024 to 2015, $15,000 was used for BOE travel and conference. The reason why the BOE or any other staff member or faculty attends any off-campus education is to make them better at their job, to improve their skills, and to perform better. The purpose of a football camp is for the student athletes to do exactly the same. Each of you has as much exposure to getting injured at any of these off-campus activities as does a student athlete. How many camps do you think we could have attended or any kind of other activity for $15,000? Maybe trustees should not be permitted to attend professional development and conferences for the exact same reason why the camp was canceled. I was not able to review the legal spend per month, over month, as it was not available on the website for whatever reason and was not in the committee agendas or the approved minutes, but I know that they exist. So while you sit up there on your dais of righteousness and pontificate about making hard decisions required by the law and being stewards of taxpayer money, the Board of Ed itself was using the same taxpayer money for off-campus enrichment. It's the same thing. We also know that media, from the media, that the fear sells and was good for the marketplace. There's a large store storm coming in to town, covered by the news. Everyone runs out to the store to get milk supplies and eggs. I think that there is a misdirection and manipulation of fear into every scenario. Most of the business worlds cannot insure every single scenario. Therefore, there are things such as risk tolerance, risk appetite, and the difference between the both is where you buy insurance coverage. There are many, many gaps. At the last Board of Ed meeting, we also discussed guardian caps. It was brought to this community's attention that the guardian caps, which are an extra feature on football helmets to provide more support and lessen the impact of injuries, was not being allowed at practice or games due to legal advice. Your legal team advised not to allow them to be used due to lessening the potential that would negate the warranty. I know that... Sorry. A brand-new helmet at retail costs about $500, and the cost of a set of pads, full set of pads, is retail cost about $150 to $200, not including the resale cost that I hope that you guys are privileged to. So as you can imagine, a suit for an injured athlete is much more than a couple hundred dollars. You're paying a vendor in this district for legal services. In 2023 to 2024, you paid about $224,000. The budget amount for this year is about $350,000. Between the both, that's $573,000 for both, which values a warranty over safety and prevention of a bodily injury. That is questionable to me and does not make any sense. It is also the BOE themselves who is the highest driver of the legal cost billed per month. Imagine all the things that we could achieve with that money if we weren't spending it on legal billing. Finally, you cannot possibly write a policy for every possible scenario. You're going to write yourself out of the business of education. As a reminder, as per your own webpage, your mission is to, quote, "Under the New York State education law, the school board is responsible for establishing policies which govern the education of all children attending district schools, for preparing the annual budget, and for ensuring the strict adherence to state law and regulations." I really hope that you will consider RFP next year for maybe potential different legal services in a cost-effective manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens?
No one signed up.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board at this time?
Good evening. Jerry Lee Stormville. I'd also like to express my deepest condolences to the friends and family and the community at large for the loss of Sheriff Kevin McConville. I had the privilege of working with him a few years back on a project in Cold Spring, and he was a straight shooter with a great sense of humor and overall a great guy, and I'm sure he will be greatly missed. So, a loss for the community right there. I knew the guy personally some years back, and kind of wish I reconnected with him before he passed. Anyway, now to the business end of things as usual. I'm just wondering, maybe somebody can take some notes and board comment, answer some questions here, because it seems like they really, like this gentleman pointed out, kind of never get answered. The phone pouches that Mr. Curzio touched on last time, I'm just wondering approximately how much was spent on those and what budget-lined item did it come from? And if I'm thinking correctly, it was, you know, tens of thousands of dollars perhaps, and isn't this the kind of spending that's supposed to be approved by the board? That's number one. Number two is a simple idea, and I almost wore one here tonight, but I decided not to make too much of a mockery of the place. Could have got a couple shoe organizers, walk in the door of the classroom, turn your phone off, put it in the shoe organizer, and you're done. Every classroom could have been probably outfitted for maybe a grand or two throughout the whole school. Again, more business. Back on July 28, you guys signed off on a settlement. Sorry, you have no idea how many settlements there are, really, and the amount of money that's been... Right. I got you. Anyway, there was a settlement between a former teacher and a current teacher, apparently, and according to the FOIL response that we got, the amount was, just kind of listen closely to this number, 115,000,000, 00,000. So I'm wondering if this number is $11,500,000 or $115,000, because the number that you signed off on really isn't a number. Anyway, the incident happened back in 2021, so I'm curious also, was there disciplinary, any disciplinary action taken by the district, and was this individual reported to the state? And the reason why I ask that is because there's no record, there's no record of the individual that, you know, said inappropriate things to young girls for four years running that we know of was ever reported. This means he can retire at the end of this year, get hired by another district, and go back to his old ways. Someone on the board should report him. Last week, I asked about a long-term sub that has retired from the district and in their new position is still enjoying the extras that are provided for the CTA, in the CTA contract for CTA members. And can anyone explain to me why that is? They're no longer a CTA member. Why are they getting the extras specifically laid out in the CTA contract? Also, in that same blurb, it stated that the salary for that individual was a little over $101,000, not including the extras, for the period of August 27 to November 7. I'm hoping that's just going to get broken down to a week-by-week thing, because that seems an awful lot of money for a couple months' worth of work. 6.04 in today's agenda is the district funding, and it states that $5.4 million is getting put into various reserve accounts. Where can we find that breakdown of what accounts they're going into? And also, it's my understanding that these reserves are basically unspent money or leftover money from last year, and please, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, because I do not like being wrong. So it's $5.4 million left over from last year, if I'm right. Then the... money from last year, and please, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, because I do not like being wrong. So, it's $5.4 million left over from last year, if I'm right. Then the budget was increased from last year's budget by $6 million. So really, we increased the budget by $11.4 million over what we spent last year. I know we're always trying to have a little bit left over here and there, but that's a huge increase in one year, if I'm right. Like I said, please, somebody tell me if I'm wrong. It also seems to be that the compliments and complaints bar seems to be off at the homepage of the, you know, the website. Not that I use it, but I'm just saying. There's a thing for the bus drivers on 6.05, I believe, in tonight's agenda. Bus drivers, after a year of service, they get a $1,000 bonus, another $1,000 bonus after five years, and that's it. Let's take a look at the teachers. They get a huge base pay. They're paid for their master's degree, even though they're required to have it. They're also paid, you know, and that's thousands of dollars a year after year after year. Grad credits, same thing. They get paid for grad credits, which is every year, they get paid for them every year. Longevity, same thing, thousands and thousands of dollars year after year after year after year. Everybody likes to talk about the new buzzword that's been around for the last couple of years about equity, but nobody really likes to actually look and see if it's actually being practiced. It seems like, you know, the blue-collar guys that are driving the buses and doing the mechanic work and keeping things running in the school, certainly not equitable with the rest of the folks, you know? Last week, I also spoke about the gentleman that had, you know, you guys probably across the board with administrators, 30 personal days, 26 days, I'm sorry, 30 vacation days, 26 days, four personal days, 54 days. You say, "Oh, that's not that much," but really, when you think about it, that's basically two months, two months off. And it's just ridiculous, but thank you. I'm sure I'll be back up later when I think of a few more things during the meeting.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the board at this time? Okay, moving on. 1.07, board comments. I'm going to try to answer a couple of those questions the best I can. I'm going to ask, well, why don't, I ask the superintendent to start, and then I can assist.
Great. So tonight, you will hear, I'm going to take it in bits and pieces, and tonight, you will hear a presentation by our athletic director, Chris Solomon, on the guardian caps and the science behind it and the research that the district did on that, because we heard about it at the last meeting, so we want to make sure that there's accurate information around.
I'm sorry, right now, we can't hear anything from the audience. Thank you.
I think that we heard a lot about camps tonight, and one thing I think that is really important to understand, there are sanctioned events and there are non-sanctioned events. A lot of the children in our district attend camps, and the families are responsible to send them to camp and provide transportation for them, and I think we need to be really aware of that. There are sanctioned activities, and then there are non-sanctioned activities. And the football camp that you referenced, we heard earlier, is a non-sanctioned event. And you asked about who would provide the authorization. So there is a process, there's a hierarchy that we use to make sure that we are being equitable, that was brought up tonight, but also making sure that there's a process for approval. And so that process for approval would go through, from the coach to the athletic director. Now, the other thing that was brought up is that we've been sending kids to camp, football camp, for a very long time. And I have to say, and you're not, no one's going to like this, but just because we've always done something doesn't mean that we should be doing something. And I think it's also important, we fall under the comptrollers' regulations, and we can compare ourselves, but we are not going to, several people compare themselves to other districts, but we need to follow the comptrollers' suggestions, and that is not to bus students to a non-sanctioned event. So I wanted to clear up some of those pieces. So tonight, you'll hear about the guardian caps, and that will clear up some information. And we'll go forward with a few other things. We will, I can share a little bit of information about the phone pouches, if you would like me to share that. So we have been working with the sole-source vendor on the phone pouches, and we have also received a grant under the, I apologize, I have to look at my notes, distraction-free school allocation. So based on that, we receive, and it's not a reimbursable grant, we received $20,754 for that grant to support the district in implementing the state law that Governor Hochul put out. With that, and with working through a BOSI's on a cross-contract, we will be purchasing, we are working on a purchase plan for the pouches so that we can implement the state plan. And I can share all of those figures as soon as the cross-contract is approved through BOSI's. But it is under the limit that allows myself, the superintendent, to be able to make those purchases. We can talk more about that when we have a presentation on it. I apologize. I got to look at my notes really quick. Sorry. Shoe organizers, one thing when we are implementing the cell phone, the state law, one thing that we heard loud and clear when we worked with, through town halls and through the policy and through talking to families and surveying and looking at other districts, one thing we heard loud and clear is that our families felt very strong about the fact that we should not collect phones. There are districts that are collecting phones. So I'll use an example. The commissioner shared a best practice, and that is, you have a milk crate, we follow regents' protocols, you have dividers, and if you're L, you put your cellphone in the L, and at the end of the day, you can pick it up. We listen to our families, and one of the things that families said over and over was, "These are expensive, and I want that on my child." So we were maneuvering the state law and also what our families were sharing. So we were trying to figure out a way, when this came about in June, to how to implement the state law with fidelity while also listening to what our families had to say. And so we made an educated decision to do that. Shoe organizers are cheap. There's a lot of practices that are. But one thing that we heard, and we have some, we're a little different than other campuses because we have an open campus at our high school. We have cubbies at the elementary schools, so students can put their phones if they have them in cubbies. That's great. At the middle school, every student is issued a locker, students will put them in there, they'll be done for the day. But at the high school, it's a different scenario. It's a large facility, we have an open campus, and students really walk around with their backpacks because there isn't a lot of time to get from one end of the building to the other. And so we wanted to respond to, when we talked to students, what they had to say, when we talked to families, what they had to say, and we talked to administrators and other professionals. So we made that decision. And I would love to say that we had to purchase shoe organizers and students threw their phones in the shoe organizers, but that wasn't, we tried to also listen to our families and their concerns. Mr. Lee, we will go back and look at the agreement to make sure that the dollar amount was accurate for that. I apologize if there was an error with that. We will correct that. But I believe it was $115,000, but I'll go back and I will check that, and I apologize. Long-term subs, that would have been under, an individual under the CTA contract. I know that sometimes is frustrating to hear, but we are obligated to follow the contract. So world language, I shared that at the last meeting, is an area that we really struggle. We want to provide our students that instructional benefit and give them the resources they need to be successful in, you know, in an ever-changing world. But that would be a position, we still have that posted. We've had a world language position posted the entire summer. We did four potential searches, and we still have that posted until November. And we're trying to figure out recruitment. Our new assistant superintendent for instruction has many connections, and he's working on some recruitment efforts as well, because we'd love to be able to hire someone that starts as a provisional teacher, and we move them through, you know, the tenure process. Ken Silver will be presenting tonight on the, an update on the budget, and I hope that he'll be able to answer your questions associated with that. I hope I got at least some of them. I go back and I do watch the video after this meeting, so if there is anything that I didn't catch or didn't provide clarification on, I will go back into them. I don't know if others want to answer as well?
Yeah, I'd like to just address, I just want to address the, you know, the idea that this board is somehow not understanding how students are feeling regarding the perception of a lost opportunity. You know, this board has been having conversations publicly about this, we've sought legal guidance on this, we've spoken to our administrators about this, and the bottom line is that we are a public school district. We are entrusted with the safety, well-being, and the educational experiences of all of our students with, that's our responsibility. And it comes with a clear obligation for us to follow state regulations, district policies, and we have a duty of care. For that reason, we cannot send students to non-sanctioned events, period. Whether we've been doing that in the past or not actually is not relevant to right now, because right now, we know that we, that there was something that we learned about, and we cannot do it. And there are several reasons, and maybe that's what needs to be more explained, and I mean, for us, there's a liability and insurance reason. If it's not district sanctioned, we do not have the assurance that our district insurances would cover if there was an issue. Two, there are safety protocols. When it's a district sanctioned event, we know that there are certain safety protocols that fall within, under what has to happen when it is a school-sponsored athletic event, and we don't have that same ability to manage that if it's not district-sponsored. Three, there's an equity and access issue here. When it is a private camp that costs money, not all families are in the same predicament to be able to pay for that. So a public school can't tell a child to go somewhere, but it costs money. If it is a district-sponsored event, the district covers that cost, and there isn't a pay-for-play. It isn't, if you, you know, pay me $10, you can go. There's something, you know, when it's different, district-sponsored, the district is covering the costs, the complete costs, the equipment costs, the cost to put on the event, and also for the equipment. And the biggest piece here is our compliance with our regulations. We are governed by the state athletic associations, we're the commissioner's regulations, the Board of Education policies, and we have to follow those rules. So that is the bottom line, and I also want to speak to the fact that I know that students were unable to go to a four-day camp, but I also know that there were practices that were put in place. So those days that they were supposed to go to camp, they were offered a district-sponsored practice on those days. So the loss of an opportunity in one area, the district did provide an opportunity in another area, and I think that's really important that people know that. And we are sorry that it rolled out that way. You know, in retrospect and in hindsight, if we had known earlier, if our superintendent had known earlier, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have rolled out the way that it did. But, you know, we are charged with following regulations, procedures, and policies, and we will continue to do that, always with students first, and students are first because of the reasons I just explained. There are safety issues, there's equity issues, and there's compliance issues. So, anybody else?
I just want to, I want to address the compliments and complaints. So that, I have the public information officer looking at that. I don't know why it was not there. It wasn't a strategy. I actually really liked that. Feedback, it's been good. So she's looking at it, and I hope to be able to provide an update at the end of the meeting tonight.
Thank you. Trustee Wise?
Yeah, I just want to sort of step through, I did take notes as the questions were asked, and I know there's, we weren't able to provide full information last time on some of the questions that were asked, maybe some of them now we can, and I do want to step through and just make sure we're getting answers out there to all of them. If we could speak quickly, and I apologize, and these are rather hastily taken notes, so if I'm a little disorganized, please bear with me. There was a question from Mr. DeGrassio, why the students were able to go to one camp and not the other, and can we just talk through the timing of that?
Sure. It was notification, so that, the camp did not go through proper practice, and so there was no notification, and when I was made aware, I made sure that we were doing what we needed to do for what President Orser shared, related to student safety and related to the provisions that provide guidance for us related to schools, district-sponsored, sanctioned events.
Understood. Next question was, I think there was some back and forth in terms of the comptrollers' advice in terms of what was a recommendation and what is regulation that we follow. No, I understand there are layers to this because we may have to follow some recommendations, for example, for our insurance to cover, but could you speak to, to what extent these are binding regulations, to what extent these are recommendations?
Sure. I mean, the comptroller is very clear that we should not be transporting students to non-district sanctioned events. That's very clear. There is a recommendation to not have students use equipment to non-sanctioned events, and that is a local decision.
Thank you. And then the other question, I know we said last time, and I think there was, this is to a point that was raised by both Mr. and Mrs. DeGrassio, was on the question of the coaches' suspension. I know last time, we said that there was an ongoing investigation. I understand that is now concluded. I know we can't speak about disciplinary matters up here, but that was an investigation within the athletic department and the administration, not a board investigation, correct?
That is correct. And it's a personnel matter, so it stands, we can't talk about it.
And just going down the line, I think we're going to be discussing the phone pouches later this evening. I know there was some discussion of that being raised, so we'll return to that. I can ask about it in old business if we don't get there. There was a question about whether we're reporting incidents, under what circumstances we report incidents of teacher discipline to the state. Can you talk to a little sort of what the decision process is around that?
Sure. Actually, anyone can file a Part 83, which is character, and that is, that is associated with, you submit that, you can search Part 83, and it goes right to the commissioner, and that is related to any certified individual in New York State. If they are not conducting themselves in the character or manner that they should based on their profession and the essential functions of their job, you can fill that out, and there is a Part 83 division of the, of New York State that reviews each of those submissions. It's different than 3028 process, which would be used, but can be aligned with that as well.
And does the district make Part 83 filings?
Yes, absolutely. But those are, again, you don't share, you know, you can't share out what that is, but yes, that happens.
All right. And just following up on two other things, this is less of a question, so thank you very much for your answers. I do want to just echo and amplify something that Mr. Lee raised around the... I do want to just echo and amplify something that Mr. Lee raised around the bus driver salaries. We, we have a constant and recurring issue in this district where we have, as we've noted often before, one of our bargaining units is far in a way the highest paid in the region, is one of the highest paid in the state at the teaching salary level. If we look at salaries for bus drivers, for cleaners, for TAs, for cafeteria staff, these are in many cases not competitive, even with surrounding districts, never mind in the state. They haven't kept up. And we have this recurring issue where, because we're sort of top-heavy in the budget, or side-heavy, or unbalanced, we end up not having the money to really step up the salary of people who are doing the hard physical work. I think there is an equity issue, there is a class issue here, and I think it is something that we as a board should be striving to address. I also hear and recognize the concern raised about money spent on legal and on board travel. Both Trustee Curzio and myself have raised, particularly in the last school board term, the somewhat excessive legal expenses that were spent on board matters, and I hope that we will see that step down. I also do think that we can, we should be looking at travel as something that, yeah, why are we spending this on ourselves? Thank you.
I actually have an answer on the compliments and complaints. It was put in announcements when we reconfigured, and that's not the best place for it, so we're going to move it and we'll put it. It's accessible, and I do have a compliment this month, so that'll be good to share. But we'll put it in a location at the top where it was previously, where it's easier to access. So we'll make that change.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the board?
Okay, moving on to 2.01, our superintendent's report.
Here I am. Okay. Going to put it up? All right. Before we, before we begin the actual presentation, at your desks are two things, the calendar for the school year, and also a safety acronym. So we used to have Shell acronym, but now as a part of the emergency response terms, you'll see it here. That has changed to shelter in place, hold in place, evacuate, secure, lockout, and lockdown. We keep that behind your IDs. So I have a request based on our district safety plan, that the board just submit this so that we have the accurate acronym for you.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you for that. And tonight, I'm excited to share that we're going to be hearing from both our new Assistant Superintendent for Instruction on some items, some follow-up and some informational. And then we'll be hearing from Ken Silver on the budget assumptions for the 25, 26 school year, 26, 27. So we'll be hearing about those. So Jeff, you can start us out.
Good evening, everybody. Just wanted, before I start, I just want to tell you how, how welcome I've been, I feel since I've been here. It's been a fast and furious month and three days, and, and everybody has welcomed me with open arms. And I've already started to really get to know the staff, parents, and community. The schools are beautiful, and I'm incredibly excited about the new school year and the work that we're going to get going and working on as far as educating our kids. There's been a lot of transition with staff and administration, so that's been part of the work, as you know, that I've been sort of like two-timing as the, as the KES principal and the ASI for the district. But getting to know people and support them and support some of the other changes at the middle school has been, has been really a great way for me to get to know and meet people. So I am, I'm honored to be here and serve you and excited to be here. So as a follow-up to last, to the last board meeting, there was a request to honor the anniversary of the World War II. I've reached out to the new principal to set up an assembly for some or all the middle schoolers, but keep in mind, he just got there, so I didn't want to overwhelm him. But I did approach him, and I said, I'd love to co-plan an assembly for some of the kids. To that end, the middle school is going to also tap into parents, grandparents, great-grandparents that might have historical context and might be able to share in that assembly. We've also reached out to, I've personally reached out to the Director of the Putnam County Veterans Service Agency to see if there are any World War II veterans that can speak to our students during the assembly. And Ken Silver's helped me out, and he has reached out to U.S. Congressman Michael Lawler, who's representing New York's 17th Congressional District, which is our district, to also tap into some possible resources. So stay tuned. I hope to have a more concrete plan for you at next board meeting. But I did want to give you an update that we heard your request, and we thought that would be a great way to kick off the school year for the kids.
Thank you.
All right. Joe and Ken, who flips? All right, cool. Dr. Fairbairn asked me to do a comparative, a comparison of enrollment from this year to last year. So, as you know, the district is going through a big turnover of student information to their system from, to Synergy, and that has not been an easy task there. The transition has been cumbersome, and we're working through the issues. Unfortunately, it coincides with the beginning of school, which makes it even a little more choppy. But we're getting there, and I think we'll be in a much better place with the system. It's much more impressive than where we were at with, what was it, E-school or E-plus? E-school? E-school, which is one, is so outdated. I think we're one of the, we were one of the last to convert. So, what you see in front of you is a breakdown of each school of enrollment as of yesterday, so K through 4. And next month, I'll come back and I'll give you some middle school and some high school numbers. But just number of sections, total students as we know it at this time, so those are moving numbers, and the class average. And this is compared to the 24, 25 numbers that are taken from the October reports that we sent, that we give the state. So those were, those are where those numbers come from. And I don't, I've been all over them, but there might be a little human error. I think I'm pretty solid in them. So, starting at M-PES, numbers are a little higher in kindergarten there, but lower, but lower comparable to the previous year in all the other grades, section-wise and numbers-wise. There is a kindergarten, I just want to double-check one of my numbers. Oh, yep, that's okay. Good. At KES, you'll notice that there is a dip in the kindergarten this year, of smaller numbers. There's a couple of reasons why that is. One, geographical location. Two, kindergarten enrollment is continuous and ongoing, so there's always a surge of one way or the other of kindergarten enrollment. Three, we are implementing a dual-language program at KPS and M-PES, which I'm really excited about, curriculum-wise and program-wise. But those are, and based off contractual obligations, if more kids in kindergarten enroll in some schools, they might have to attend kindergarten in other schools. So that number is a little bit low in the kindergarten at KES, but it is really because of the dynamics. And one of the things that I've been schooled on very quickly in this district is, if a class becomes vacant, it's not as simple as just filling the class. There is a shuffle that exists that I am learning about quickly. So with the move, with the onset of the school year coming in a couple of days, we want parents and kids in classrooms to know who their teachers are, and that's the bottom line. So we tried to stabilize those sections, and I think that's the only anomaly in the numbers that I'm showing you tonight, as far as one that might be a little bit low. And then the KPS are pretty solid for last year as well. Lastly, when I, when I came into the district about a month ago, I was charged with giving the middle school sort of a facelift. And so two just initial pieces with the onset of new administration, the fifth-grade academy. One of the things that, that the superintendent asked me to do was look at getting some visual pieces at the back of the cafeteria that were appealing to the eye. So when people come up in the back, it sort of looks like a fenced-up parking lot. And so you'll see those banners right there to the left, the GFMS and the six Cs. They, we, we're on the way, and they should be delivered to us by Friday, and knock on wood, we'll have them up and running when kids arrive on, on Wednesday, on Tuesday, Wednesday, Tuesday. Also, to the right, we've been working with a vendor and Sarah Baio, who does a lot of this, the SEL work for Bosse's and current administration, to, to make the cafeterias a more student-centered, friendly experience for kids. And so we're looking at different layouts to engage kids, to have kids feel comfortable to be able to talk to peers, to be able to do what they want to do, choose which cafeteria they want to be in, and, and provide a really cool environment. Ken, we'll talk to you a little bit about the funds that we were able to use for that, but what you see up on the screen is the design for the small cafeteria. That's phase one. We hope to meet with the vendor again this, next week with the principal and administration. I didn't want to move forward without them present. And then if that's a go, we're going to look at a design for the large part of the cafeteria. And so I think that's my initial opening report to you, and I hope to be reporting to you on a lot of really neat things that are going on in the district. And thank you again for having me and welcoming me.
Thank you.
One last thing, President Orser. I'd love to get a picture of the board and do a welcome. Tomorrow's our opening day for teachers. It's a really exciting time, and we're trying to build a lot of great energy. Today, we had new teacher orientation. It was, the energy was awesome. I love working with new teachers. I got to do an hour with them and talk about some new things. Tomorrow, there's going to be a slideshow, a live slideshow, where staff can share what they did in the summer, or a welcome-back energy that'll be streaming at our opening day event, if anybody, if any of the board attends. So this is my first Canva creation, and it's a QR code that takes it to a website where you could upload a picture. So I would love to take a picture with the board and have that on the slideshow to welcome staff tomorrow.
That'd be wonderful. Do you want to do it right now?
Whatever.
Sure.
At your pleasure, of course.
The board. Picture time!
One more slide for the superintendent's report. We can do that. Whatever you want to do.
Let's just get, let's get the picture.
Let's get the picture. All right. Where do you want to go? Joanne's always a professional photographer.
So, how about we just come in? Oh, that's good. Get over here and let the board. Including you. In front of the table? Okay. Go ahead, John. John says in front of the table. Okay. Do you scan, you scan it first, Joanne?
No, just take a picture and then off.
Go ahead, John, take the lead here. Tell us where to go. Okay, we're coming in front. John, John wants us in front. We're coming in front.
I like that. So what I'll do is I'll upload it tonight, and I'll say, "Welcome from the Board of Education and Central Administration. Have a great school year." That'll be one of the pictures. That'll be scrolling when staff comes in tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Just quickly, while we're switching slides, and as Ken's getting ready, we did switch to a new student information system. Long-term, it's going to be very parent-friendly, and our, our previous student information system was phasing out. We, we weren't able, we work with Synergy, we weren't able to select the timing of when we were, they were going to support our district in the transition. There have been some bumps. Administration has been working all weekend, previous weekend. Sorry. But we think now we're ready to move forward, parents have access, and we've been able to do that, and we will, long-term, this will be a benefit to families. And Ken, you want to share your budget?
Sure. Board, you have two documents in front of you. One is a multi-page document, which is a lot of detail about what I'm going to be talking about. It includes the reserves, the specific reserves that we are recommending you approve tonight. If you look at perhaps, starting on page two and on to page three of the big document, you will see items highlighted in yellow. Those items are what I'm recommending you put into the various reserves. Each place where there's a yellow, there's a recommendation, there's a dollar figure, it describes the reserve, and it says why we're doing it. Also, you will see right below that, an anticipated recommendation of what we are hoping to be able to do for the 26, 27 budget. That comes right below the yellow part on your large document. We're going to put up, we have a, we have already started the 26, 27 budget. I already have a first draft completed of all the revenue portions. Everything from last year is in it. You're welcome to look at it at your leisure if you would like to see it now. We also, as you recall, have done a three-year budget, and the budget for 26, 27 that I'm working on matches the broad framework of the first year, or the, I guess, the second year of the three-year budget, because this is the first year of the three-year budget. I'm just going to mention at the bottom of page one on your large document board, having to do with the cafeteria. We did a lot in the cafeterias, the kitchens, in this past year, and yet we still have a fund balance of $631,000 in the cafeteria fund. A portion of that, a small portion of that, will be recommended to be used for the cafeteria revitalization in the small cafeteria at the middle school. So this will not be general fund monies recommended for that. So now on to our anticipated fund balance for June 30th, just now, June 30th, '25. The, the, we have a large, it appears to, right now, unaudited, that we have a lot of money beyond the budget. And let's, let's break that apart. We had only about $1.7 million underspent. So that means the budget that we had last year was underspent by only about $1,007,007. The big ticket is the extra revenue that we had last year. For some reason, only a few hundred thousand dollars was budgeted as interest income last year. And committee, audit committee members, you, you may recognize this subject that we have talked about. In fact, we had $1,008,000 in investment income over what was budgeted last year. So we had $4 million in extra revenue, but almost $2 million of dollars of that was because the budget was under-budgeted for last year. So only about $200,000 was, was listed as revenue for, for interest income, and we made over $2 million in interest income. Part of that has been described to you in the program that we have where money gets swept into an investment account, into an interest-bearing account overnight, and we don't take the money out until we need it for payroll or to pay our bills. It's earning interest all the time. So even though interest rates have dropped, we have continued to do well because of the way we invest our money. Another part of that $4 million that appears unaudited over budget was that we got state aid of $1 million more than had been anticipated. And I would tell you that when the budget is created, you don't know exactly what the revenue will be from state aid. We just don't know. We didn't know this year, and we didn't know the year before when it was under-budgeted. We're hoping that the budget that I've started to put together for 26, 27 will be much closer to the reality, and budget assumptions will be discussed soon. But the assumptions talk about state aid, they talk about other forms of revenue, interest income, talking about what might happen if the feds do not come through with some of our grant money. So, on that, it looks like we have about $5.8 million in additional fund balance as of June 30th. So that means, if you add that to what we had at June 30th of '24, if you take a look at that simple screen that's there, the next to last line, now on the last line, we now have $31.5 million in reserves. Well, there comes a point that that money should be used to help the taxpayers, and not just continue to, to save the money or all of it every single year. And so if you look at the recommendation- And so if you look at the recommendations that I'm making, these are anticipated recommendations that will be made to you in the months to come. Not now, but I'm anticipating it, that we would use some $4.3 million out of the $5.8 to offset increases for next year's budget and to keep taxes at an absolute minimum for next year. I would anticipate today that the taxes for next year would be about half of what they were for this year, the tax increase. I've talked to you about public policy, and good public policy being that there be something in the way of a tax increase. What we will likely propose to you will be perhaps a $30 per house for the year increase for the 26-27 year. It's about $50 or $60 now. It'll be about half of that next year if things hold up the way I'm thinking. Now, what I'm proposing to you to put away $5.3 million in the reserves, again, if you look at the reserve in yellow on page two and three of the big document, that's not all of what we think there will be. After that, I need to be cautious because we haven't, we don't have audited figures yet. And so I'm recommending we put away $5.4 out of what I think will be $5.8. Part of that balance will go to make sure that we have our 4%, the maximum unrestricted fund balance that we can have, so that we have that as a maximum. And then the balance, we will come back to you when the audit is finished, and we will recommend additional reserves to be allocated, to fund additional reserves. One of the reserves that we're recommending you do tonight is the $3 million for the repair reserve that the board approved last year and the public approved in the vote of the budget last year. So that's more than half of the reserves. We are also recommending an increase in insurance reserves as our insurance costs go up, and we're recommending an increase in, I think it's called retirement reserves, because this is an area that was under-budgeted by $1 million last year, and we're not going to let that happen again. And we need to increase the reserves as we have to increase the budget allocation for this. So about $200,000 was allocated for this retirement benefit for teachers, and it has been $1,002,000 or more for years. But only $200,000 was budgeted for it in this, in last year. So we are fixing that. And if you choose to look at the revenue that I now have in the 26-27 first draft, you'll see all those things fixed. The interest is fixed, the allocations are fixed. And I ask you to look through what I gave you. What's here is just, this first page is just a summary. What's up there is just a summary. And if there's any questions about that, happy to answer them.
We will be working through, just really quick to add to that, October 1st, we are going to pull back the Budget Advisory Committee and start the process. So bring them in, have the community involved, and continue the advisory committee.
And at that meeting, we will be providing the first draft of the 26-27 budget. We will be rolling out again the three-year budget. So I'll just mention that this year's budget was a 3.9% increase in the budget, and I anticipate that that will be down to about 3.2% or 3.1% increase in the budget for next year. And a very small tax increase, reserves used, and with all of that, we will still be increasing our reserves by the difference between 4.3 and 5.8, about $1,000,000 and a half dollars will go to increase our reserves. On that subject, it's important to remember that we don't know what's going to happen going forward with the grants, with the state. If the hold harmless on our foundation aid is removed or gone or decreased, we could lose a lot of money because of decreases in enrollment through the years. We will be fine no matter what the state does, no matter what the feds do. We have sufficient resources to go for years regardless of what happens. And so I believe that that preparedness should give confidence in the community that we are all doing the right thing for our kids going forward.
Thank you, Ken. Trustee Wise, I think you have a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First off, these two documents are very helpful. Thank you. Could we add these to the agenda just so the public can see them, see what we're talking about? You know, as we've been reading them, these here.
Just add them, well, they're on the agenda, so just, you mean post them onto this?
Yeah.
Yeah, could we make them so? Thank you.
And so if I understand correctly, between the miscalculation of how much we would be receiving through interest previously, not in this year's budget, but in the previous year's budget, and the surplus we have here, we have a total surplus of about $6 million.
Yes, sir.
And I know, because when we went into last year's budget process, we were looking at what we thought was a hole of $6.5 million. It seems like that hole was nonexistent, which doesn't mean that many of the savings we found were not crucial and important, and including some of the issues that were raised tonight, we should continue to be saving money. But it sounds like that hole was not in fact accurate. Thank you. The other part of this, now when we say next year's budget increase will be smaller, tax increase will be smaller, when it'll be $30 rather than $60, I do want to emphasize those are cumulative. That's still $90 over the two years. It sounds like with the surplus this large, we actually are in a position where we could reduce taxes if we chose to, or not raise them at all.
Well, we'll see how that goes in the months ahead. We'll see what the audit brings, we'll see what the state does in the spring, but I would again say to you that that's not good public policy. I've seen that in action in my many years of doing this, and it creates a disastrous condition over time. A $30 per house increase in taxes, I won't characterize it as small, big, or anything in between, but I believe that approximately that would be the proper way to move forward.
And this, we're really young in this process right now. So we still have the advisory groups, we still have budget workshops, presentations. We'll make those determinations. We just wanted to give you a first look.
No, absolutely. And I don't want to, nothing that we're saying tonight is binding, obviously.
Absolutely.
And I think that is important to recognize. I just, when I hear we have a huge surplus and also we should raise taxes, my heckle's always rise slightly, even if we're talking about a very small increase. But thank you very much. Thank you.
Great. Anybody else?
Yes.
Trustee, no, Vice President Kerzio.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Silver, could you just briefly speak to the tax surgiary reserve and why in this proposal you recommend $0? And furthermore, with the previous issue of New York City challenging their assessment and that whole caper as far as them winning in court on that, does that affect your thinking into this at all?
So we haven't used that reserve in a long time. It is, what is it, $3.9 million, something like that?
Two, just shy of 2.9?
2.9 million. And so I'm of the belief that regardless of what happens, and we know of nothing right now, that regardless of what happens, we have a healthy balance in that. And since nothing has been taken out of it for years, I just didn't see a reason to put something into it. If there is additional fund balance between the numbers I'm recommending for tonight's reserve and what we actually end up with, the board may choose to put a few hundred thousand more into that at that time. But this is a recommendation for tonight that I feel helps to sustain us. One thing we should mention is that the capital reserve was intended to be a 10-year reserve and was intended to be gone by the spring of '25. And what happens is you can't put any more into that reserve, but you can use that reserve. It also can earn interest, but you cannot put money into it. So where we used $850,000 in the current year's budget from that reserve, we can't put any more back into that reserve. That eventually will disappear, but the board will have an opportunity to re-up that with the public's approval at a future time. Right now, that still has, that's well-funded right now.
Thank you. And of course, the $3 million in the repair reserve, that was a recommendation from our auditors, from the Audit and Finance Committee, from yourself, and the full board was supportive of that.
Yes, we should point out that the repair reserve is to repair new equipment, equipment that was purchased through a bond. It's not to, it's not to replace an old boiler, it's to keep a new boiler working. That's the purpose of the repair reserve. And one of our recommendations, I anticipated recommendations for next year, will be that we use a substantial portion of that repair reserve to do repair reserve work in the 26-27 budget.
Thank you. Comments on the whole presentation or just the, Mr. Silver's?
Anything you have.
I want to just go back to the first slide. I want to thank Dr. Gorman for your presentation, sir, especially as it relates to the World War II initiative and assembly. So thank you very much for taking that suggestion from our last board meeting. I know me and Trustee Wise brought it up. And it's just, when we think about the numbers of World War II veterans that are left, out of 16 million that served in the Second World War, less than four tenths of 1% remain today, approximately 60,000. So to be able to allow our students to connect to that generation, I think would be a huge educational win for our students and just a great thing for our district to do. So I want to thank you for bringing that forward and getting that almost across the finish line. We'll get there. Thank you.
The only other thing I would like to ask the superintendent and the assistant superintendent about the budget advisory, maybe if you could give the public, because it is a new year, I don't know if there's a chance for new people to get on it, or if you could just talk about that for a second.
Absolutely. We will send out a parent square message and ask if anyone, we have a list of people that have participated and that committee met this summer, but we will send out, when we send out, we also are going to be meeting with the athletic advisory committee. So we'll send out reminders and elicit new members.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to 2.02, educational presentation. Great. Thank you.
All right. So I would like to invite Chris Salam, our athletic director. He's gonna, at the last meeting, there was some conversation about guardian caps, and there was tonight. So I wanted to, this presentation tonight is really informative. There are times when the board and the community hear information. We just want to make sure that it contains all of the information that you need so we can make informed decisions and know what's happening. So Chris is going to do a brief presentation, formative presentation tonight on guardian caps.
So good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to start off by thanking the Board of Education and the Carmel community for giving me the opportunity to present tonight. I'm here tonight to try to help clarify comments that were made at a previous board meeting in regard to guardian caps. Comments were made about our legal team advising that we should not use the caps. Legal did not weigh in on that decision when guardian caps were discussed previously in the past. The issue was that the helmet companies did not approve the use of guardian caps at the time and informed us that if they were used, it would void the warranty of the helmet. So I just wanted to explain that. Over the past few months, that has changed. There's documents and language now by helmet companies as well as the NFHS that now approve guardian caps and the use of them. So at this time, before I get into my presentation, I'd like to just introduce one of our varsity assistant coaches, Mr. Jeff Hughes, to say a few words.
I spoke at the last board meeting regarding the guardian caps, and during that, just as Mr. Salam said, legal at Carmel was not, said no for it. What was brought to me was it said, "Legal said that they can't have it." I did not realize that it was Riddell and Schutz's legal team. It was theirs and not ours. So I misspoke on that one. Like to clarify that on my statement in the past, and I'd like to just say how now we're very, very happy that we have these on for the safety, that we, some of our players have these on for the safety that they have, that they have right now on it. Thank you.
So I'm going to speak a little bit about guardian caps. I'm going to discuss what they are and how they work. Guardian caps are padded soft-shell covers that attach to a football helmet to reduce the impact of collisions and potentially lower the risk of concussions and other head injuries. If you look at that picture on the bottom right-hand of the screen, just think of it as a padded exterior part of the helmet so that during practices or at times during games, if there is any kind of collision or impact, it can reduce the potential risk of a head injury or concussion. They're made of a soft urethane material that absorbs force of impact. Like I previously said, they fit on the outside of the helmets. They are designed to move independently, so if they are hit head-on, the helmet can, the guardian cap can move slightly to help with the impact of that hit. At this time, the NFL has mandated them, and many colleges are using them as well. There are studies out there that suggest that it can reduce the risk of head injuries anywhere between 10 and 33% based on the impact and that specific situation. Next slide, please. So one of the things that I did when I was asked to speak about this was I reached out to all the schools in our county, as well as all of our opponents for the upcoming season. Obviously, Putnam County is not a large county, but at this time, Brewster uses guardian caps for their football program, as well as Haldane, Maupac, and Putt Valley do not. Next slide, please. For the upcoming season, the opponents on the screen are the opponents at the varsity and junior varsity level, which compose of schools from Westchester, Putnam, and Rockland County. So it's a little bit of a more broad perspective. Eastchester does not use them. Lakeland does not use them. As I previously said, Brewster does. Clarkstown North is using them for the first time this season. Somers does not use them. Yorktown does not use them, and Maupac does not use them. Next slide, please. Nope, I'm sorry. That's it.
Mr. Salam, would you talk a little bit about the, our school physician and any other feedback you received? I know you did a lot of research to...
Yep. So I reached out to both our district medical director, as well as our athletic trainer. Both had perspectives on the guardian caps, have done some research. They both said that there's still not a ton of information out there on the impact that they have in fully reducing concussions and head injuries. They did say that it, like anything, is an additional safety measure. So it's really, again, a local decision. It's not a requirement or a mandate. So just based on that information, as well as what I presented, I just wanted to make sure that the Board of Education and our community had some information about guardian caps, what they are, what they do, and kind of the potential use of them. So I hope that clarifies some of the comments that were made at the previous meeting.
Questions? Any questions from the board?
Are these to be used in practices and games? What would be the standard use of these?
So the recommendation is that they are used at practices because over the course of those six practices a week, or sorry, five practices a week as opposed to one game, there's more of an opportunity for a collision, a hit, just because of the frequency of repetitions that they're getting at a practice. There are also studies about which positions are more likely to get concussions or head injuries. So a lot of teams that do use them, or started using them a few years ago, they started with certain positions that are considered like high-contact and high-impact positions. So those would be like your offensive and defensive lineman, you know, they're colliding on almost every play, your running back, and as well as some of your cornerbacks and safeties, so like your defensive backfield. So really, based on the position and the, what you have to do in terms of covering the field, there is a higher risk at certain positions for higher impact. So that's where a lot of these districts, and even when the NFL originally started, they started with certain positions, and now they've gone to everybody. But the NFL obviously is a little bit different than a public school district.
Do you have any information, exactly what you're talking about, about these caps being used at either the collegiate level or the professional level versus, you know, a high school or younger level?
Yeah, so like I said previously, the NFL has mandated them now. Most Division One programs are using them. High school, I obviously gave you a sample size between the county and our... High school, I obviously gave you a sample size between the county and our opponent. So, there's a mixed bag in terms of who's using them, who's not. You know, it's, it's an additional safety measure. Like I said before, it's not a requirement, but at, at this time, I just wanted to make sure that I gave everyone enough information to know more about the topic and have an understanding of what was discussed and clarify what was discussed at a previous meeting in regards to our legal. Because like I said, like Mr. Hughes said, as well as myself, our legal did not weigh in on the use of guardian caps at the time.
Could we just talk, can you just specify again what our school physician said? And did they say anything associated with the size of our students compared to potential players in the NFL related to like potential neck injuries or anything?
So, there was nothing specific about size. I don't want to misspeak on what, you know, Dr. Rojas, our medical physician, said, but he said that he has researched this and has read some articles, and at this time, he's just not sure how big of an impact they have in reducing concussions. But that's based on his studies and his research.
Yep. Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah, of course.
I just, we had our first, you know, day of football officially Saturday, first day of sports at the high school level yesterday. Just want to thank everyone who helped get our seasons ready. My clerical, Ms. Donna Jones, is phenomenal, our athletic trainer, our grounds, our custodians, our buildings look great, our facilities look great. So, just thank you for everyone, your hard work this summer. We're going to have a great year. We're going to have a great athletic season, and go Rams. So, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along to 2.03, compliments and complaints.
Okay. I do have a compliment. The subject was a bright note to start your morning, and this individual wrote about just how professional one of our clerical staff was, and just what a positive experience, very customer, student-friendly, and just extremely supportive of both the family and also the, the student. So, wonderful to this staff member.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, 3.01, policy. We had a policy committee meeting on August 15th. It was another all-day event. Thank you to the policy committee and to our superintendent and to our attorneys. We, as you'll see in the, in the notes, we went over many, many, many policies. Most will be on our next agenda. We unfortunately just didn't have a big turnaround time, but it was great and it, minutes are attached. Okay. Moving on to our consent agenda. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the consent, oh, sorry, did I, oop, sorry. Oh, okay. Sorry, yes. 4.01, board discussion. We are going to be discussing policy 1240.
Madam President, at this time, I would like to make a motion tenor into executive session to receive legal advice exempt from the open meetings law.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I expect this will only take about five to 10 minutes at the latest. We will be right back. All right. Great. Thank you, everybody. Say, moving on to 4.01, policy 1240, visitors to school. We are going to just have a board discussion. We have a current policy, and the board was sent some suggested language this afternoon. We've gotten legal advisement on the suggested language. So, I'm going to open up the discussion for anybody that would like to discuss it. Trustee Douglas.
So, I'm looking at the public document, that is, the public content for policy 1240, visitors to schools. And I question, in the, there's the first expansive paragraph, and then the following rules apply to visitors to the schools. Anyone who's not a regular staff member, school board of education member, or student of the school will be considered a visitor, which means that we are not considered visitors. Yet, if I understand this correctly, the previous verbiage was school board members not unofficial school board business are visitors to the schools. So, I'm curious as to the rationale behind the change.
I think that part of the reason we're having this discussion and that Trustee Curzio and I put forth some other languages because of the fact that it wasn't defined the differences. So, what is a school board member versus what's a school board member unofficial business? And we try to be more with the language that we're putting forth, you know, what our actual roles are and what we are allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do.
So, I, I have significant concern about that verbiage change because according to this verbiage, then any of us, any trustee, would have the same access to the building as a regular staff member and a student. And as a regular staff member, we'd be able to enter any door, we'd be able to walk through the halls, we would have unfettered access as a regular staff member would, and we are not regular staff members. We are elected volunteer officials who are tasked with hiring and evaluating the superintendent and setting policy. We are not tasked with walking through the schools when not in the capacity as the entity of the Board of Education. If we're doing a tour, if the superintendent is walking us through, if we are invited to an event, then we are there in the capacity as trustees and Board of Education members. This verbiage says, well, if I'm on the way to work and I want to walk through the school, I can just walk through the school.
Yeah. So, I'd just like to say, because we had some discussion of this last week, I do want to say I share Trustee Douglas's concerns. In particular, I think of the appearance we're giving to the public, if in our role as parents, we have any level of access that members of the public do not have. I think back a couple of years to when my daughter, Darcy, was running modified track. And in the short run event, it was very nice. You sat in the front row of the bleachers and you could see her very close and get good pictures. In the longer events, for a significant part of the run, she was a distance back on the other side of the track. And I know I would feel a way if I looked down and saw some other parent on the team standing in the midway, getting a close-up picture of the far side of the track because they happened to be on the board or they happened to be a member of staff or any other reason that didn't have to do with the actual operation of the team. As written, the policy presented last week, I know would have allowed that, and I have deep concerns about that. As presented here, I think this addresses some of it, but I do, looking at the proposed new language tonight in the discussion item, this is section three, board members at public events. I would need to see this in the context of the whole policy to see if indeed we're still trying to make the change that was proposed last time to the opening language of the policy, defining who is a visitor in such a way that a board member is not a visitor. Because when I'm there to represent, to see my child, when I'm there to speak to guidance, when I'm there, I should have no rights any different than any other parent in the district.
Trustee Wise, I think you gave a great example as far as you're saying that you'd be at a track meet, and if you were there watching your child run around the track, and at one point, she's coming around, you have a great opportunity to take a photo, but then at the far end, not so much. But then, for instance, if there was a board member there with their own child, and they have, or in the middle of the field, taken, taken a photo, and of course, that would elicit a certain type of emotion. And I think that that is exactly why some of the new language in section four of this document, which I think is the third attachment under the, the public content, it says distinction between trustee role and parental role. When board members attend district events in their personal capacity as parents, guardians, or individuals serving in a parental role, they are subject to the same procedures and limitations as any other member of the public. In such circumstances, the courtesies outlined in this policy do not apply as the individual is present in a personal rather than official capacity. So, of course, just what you outlined, Trustee Wise, would be you or that other board member there in their capacity as a parent, watching their child participate in a track event and wanting to take photos of their own children. Then I think some of the other aspects of the new wording here, so you have the ambassador role as board members. Of course, earlier tonight, there was an individual at the microphone that outlined some of our roles and responsibilities as outlined by New York State law, which is absolutely correct. Of course, our community expects, expects us to be present in, at district events, to be able to support our district and our district family, our students, our staff, and I think that's just a reasonable expectation that anybody at this table or in the community would have of us to fulfill as trustees, so the ambassador role. When attending such events, board members are present in their official capacity as ambassadors of the school district. Their attendance demonstrates visible support for the educational program, student achievement, and community engagement. So, limitations, again, I think to talk to your point and also to Trustee Douglas's point, very important that this was included in here. The right of access and recognition afforded to board members in their official capacity does not extend to operational control or administrative authority at events. Board members shall not direct staff, students, or volunteers, intervene in the management or supervision of the event, make unilateral commitments or representations on behalf of the board unless expressly authorized by board action or the board president, which of course is in line with other policies that have very similar language to that effect. I think it's also, of course, we know as board members that me as one individual cannot direct the superintendent to do something. That would have to be a majority of the board acting as, as a body in, in a, in a meeting. So, I think that that was a valid concern that you raised, and that's why some of this language was outlined to address that concern. I do think also that there is a difference between us as board members in our ambassador role for the school district versus a visitor to the school district. And we were talking before that, for instance, so board members, and especially board presidents in the past, I know the current president does not take the opportunity, but board presidents, including in, on my time on the board, have had and are still, would be granted access to a master key in the school district. Visitors, for instance, are not granted master keys for the school district. The president is authorized to carry the district credit card should an authorized purchase be, be warranted. Visitors do not have access to the district credit card. Visitor, we have obviously badges that allow us, you can swipe the door or unlock the door into the school building. Visitors don't have access to, to those cards. So, there is a distinction, I think is the right term to use, between, again, us as ambassadors of the school district representing our community, which again, I think is expected of us, versus a visitor to the school district. And last point, if I may, is something that a trustee brought up at the last meeting, and I think also a concern that Trustee Douglas had. For instance, no one is suggesting, and it would be very inappropriate to do so, for instance, a board member going into the school during the school day and just sitting down in a classroom and doing a teacher observation. Again, that's not our role as an individual board member. That's not the board's role as a collective body to go into a classroom and do a teacher observation. These are specifically outlined to district-sponsored events.
Yeah. So, if, if I may, if anyone else has come in before, I can...
Well, just if, so, the document that we are, I commented on the document that is public content on board docs. The document that you're talking about is in administrative content? So, if I understand this correctly, we see it, the public does not?
That's correct.
So, we're talking about something...
You can make it public.
If we could please make that public, but I do want to emphasize that the document in administrative content, unless I'm mistaken, says part three, board members at public events. It's a replacement for only part of the other policy. Is that correct?
Well, the, I mean, I'm the one that wrote it, so I will speak to that. So, I wrote this exactly for what we're talking about, what Trustee Douglas's concerns are. I really, after our discussion at the last board meeting and knowing it was on for discussion for tonight, I really thought it was important for me to write the distinctions, right? Because the distinct, so I didn't address the whole policy. I only addressed the polit, the part of the policy where I felt the most conflict was to try to bring a solution tonight for the discussion.
Right. The, the reason I ask is outside of the part modified by this, there's, to Trustee Douglas's point, there's still a proposed change here that would remove the language, school board members not unofficial school board business are visitors to the school. That is, by removing that language, they would no longer be considered visitors.
So, I think what, if we can discuss kind of, if people are feeling okay about the proposed language, putting in a part about, a new part about what the board members at public events are, I think that the strategy would then be, if we have that, going back to policy with the entire policy, knowing that the board is in favor of adding this distinction, and then I think we can clean up the rest to match it.
Yeah. I would, I would say, I approve, I like the new language that was proposed, which I understand is now being made public. I do share, I do feel that parts of it are redundant. For example, saying board members have the right to attend any public event, that's the definition of a public event. Any member of the public has that right.
We, we can clean it up at the policy committee.
Yep. So, yeah, I'd like to see this come back. Yeah, I think it is a substantial change. I think if we could bring it back for a first read...
Absolutely. I just, you know, because we, because it was the will of the board to have this on for discussion, I wanted to actually provide something that I thought we could discuss.
Completely understood.
Yeah.
So, I, I do have another comment.
Yeah.
So, make sure that that is public so everyone can see it. It is now. Thank you. So, let me see, visitors, no. All right. So, here we go. Now, it's bigger. Make it a little bigger. I need new glasses. Thank you very much. So, under three, so the policy 1240, visitors to the schools, draft revision. So, go down to number three. Courtesies afforded in recognition of this role, board members shall be afforded courtesies of access and recognition assisted with their status as elected officials, similar to district staff who attend events in their employment capacity even when not directly participating in the event. Period. I feel anything else? So, for instance, inclusion in programs or acknowledgements where appropriate. That already happens, you know, when appropriate, whether it be graduation, whether it be the musical, you know, we are honored to be included in that even though, you know, some people put, you know, hundreds upon hundreds of hours in, and, you know, that is truly an honor. But then provided opportunity to give congratulatory or supportive awards to event organizers, staff, you know, that's something that we can do on our own, but I don't like that there because at the end of the day, if I'm going to see the musical, it's not about me congratulating the people who just knocked it out of the park. It's about their night. And if the opportunity comes for me to say to any of the professionals or any of the students, wow, great job, but that's a night for them and that's a night for their family. You know, you go into a sporting event and they just do really well, or they suffer a defeat, but they've just worked their tails off, you know, that's a time for the coaches and the athletes and their families, not for us to have something in policy that, hey, we get to say congratulations, hey, great game, too. If it happens, great, we are there supporting them, but I see no purpose in, in those.
Anybody else? Okay. Great. We will be moving this policy back to policy and bringing it back. Thank you. Okay. Consent agenda, 5.0, 5.01. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented or amended as recommended by the interim superintendent of schools. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Yes.
Okay.
I had one question and one comment, both on, if I can find it now. Oh, no, I'm, I apologize, that's going to be 6.01.
Okay.
General action.
Great. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I do have...
Oh, sorry. Whoa, whoa, back.
Sorry about that. So, within the consent agenda, there are three fundraisers, and they're, they're great, homecoming dance, homecoming t-shirt, but there's one specific cancer awareness field hockey game, and if I'm reading this correctly, that's October 3rd for the game. So, folks, October 3rd, come out, come support... So folks, October 3rd, come out, come support the athletes. It's a cancer awareness day. You know, we talk about supporting our schools and supporting our community and supporting our athletes, and this is an incredible cause. October 3rd, come out, support the athletes, support the community.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna, all in favor?
Aye.
Absentees, objections? Great, motion passed. Thank you very much. 6.01. Be resolved that the Board of Education approves the instructional and non-instructional personnel requests as recommended by the interim superintendent of schools. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Trustee Curzio, I know you have a question here.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. There was, I'm trying to find the exact line now, but it was, I believe, a .83 art teacher, and I was just curious on how that worked. I saw, I don't know if it said intern or student teacher.
Looking for it.
I'm trying to find it myself now. I just.
.83 art teacher. I'm finding it, Joan, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Was it art teacher?
Yes.
Was it a clear?
It's temporary part-time assignments, monk, Allison. You're gonna do like Ctrl F, hit .83.
Oh, .83 art teacher, yes.
Yeah, GFMS. It's an internship.
We're doing, we're providing visual arts.
Mm-hmm.
It's like a high school.
Okay.
Trying it.
Microphone, sorry, the microphone.
The microphone.
Oh, dear. Oh, yeah, internship. I don't know what that is. Thank you.
So we're providing, we were asked about this by the community, and we want to provide an opportunity for studio and visual art.
Mm-hmm.
So we will be doing that. And I know the .83 FTE seems unusual, but it is exactly how the schedule fits for that, for the sections.
Excellent, thank you. And I just also wanted to take a moment to recognize the retirements with appreciation. We have Mary Hughes, who is a math teacher at George Fisher Middle School, effective November 17th. Joseph Valentinetti, a bus aide, effective September 22nd. Patrick Lavery, a teaching assistant, I hope I pronounced that correct, at Carmel High School.
It's Lavery.
Lavery. Thank you, Joanne. Patrick Lavery, teaching assistant at Carmel High School, effective August 31st. And Angelina Mendez, an English teacher at George Fisher Middle School, effective August 27th. The entire board wishes to extend our sincere appreciation to the four of you for your service to our school district, to our students, and just thank you very much for all that you've done to make the school district a better place. And just know that you are very much appreciated.
You're here.
Thank you. Anybody else? Trustee Wise.
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. Before I start, I do want to echo trustee Curzio's statement on behalf of all of us in honor of these retirees. I would ask, actually, going forward, when there is a retirement, could we include the years of service in the table? I just think that would be a neat way for us to.
Yeah, absolutely. Or we can, what we've done in the past is been able to share that and maybe not put it in the public document, because people might feel weird about that, but we can absolutely share it like we have in the past.
That's great. Sounds good. With that out of the way, I do have a couple of questions. One, I note there's a mentor coordinator position stipended at $5,532. Can you speak briefly to what that does?
Yes, the mentor coordinator does the high school mentoring. And I actually will have some pictures of that for you. So all of the mentors, we have student mentors, and Joanne Morgan facilitates those mentors. It's a very powerful program.
Yeah, that's a wonderful program, so.
They were, just the other day, entered, welcomed all of the freshmen in, and it was a wonderful experience.
Sounds good. Next question I had here, I'm just looking at the various department heads, department chairs, which were, I know were reestablished in this year's budget. They were removed last year, and we ended up reestablishing them late in the year at full pay. Just looking at this, in this personnel agenda, we have a total of $42,436 in stipends for department heads, an additional $55,494 in stipends for department chairs, an additional $18,801 in stipends for special education department chairs. In the last personnel budget, we had a total of $73,992 in stipends for department chairs. We had a total of $12,622 in stipends for department heads. Now, I'm not just reading off numbers. The reason I ask is this totals $203,345 in stipends for heads of departments. My understanding, when we eliminated this and reintroduced this, it was eliminated at 167,000 in savings. It was reintroduced, I believe, at one, I want to say 176, but please, it might have been 167 as well. And I'm just wondering why it's now up to 203,000.
Was that, can I get those figures for you?
Yeah.
Because what we did is there was, like, we're talking about last year. There was $56,000 that wasn't deducted from the budget, and so then when we reintroduced it, it was about 178,000?
Okay, so.
So 178 plus the 56,000 that we didn't take out of last year's budget would equal that. I think what you're asking is have we added any positions?
So the department heads were not deducted previously, is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct. There were some positions that were critical that we kept in last year, and those decisions were made and presented. No position has been added. We would have to create a position, and at this point, we'd have to do an MOA with CTA for any creation of any positions.
So with that in mind, can we just get confirmation that the amount we're paying for each position is equivalent to what it was prior to the elimination and registration?
It would not be, because in the contract, there is a salary increase. So if you note that there is, if you look at the percentage increase, which I don't have in front of me, the difference would be a different number, but it should be comparable in the positions. We should be able to compare from last year to this year.
So the percentage increase is, also applies to stipends? The stipends for these roles?
That is very correct. There's a three-year calendar for those.
Thank you. So we, so we expect, in fact, this amount that goes to department heads and department chairs to increase annually going forward?
It, that's how, well, this is the last, July was the, you know, last, yeah, this is the last year of the contract, so that will be something that is just a negotiating item.
Right.
Right. But currently, how the contract is written is it's increased yearly.
And the only reason I ask is when we look at these salaries, and I do want to appreciate the sort of reverse engineering you guys have done in presenting this, how much of each salary is stipend, how much is.
Yeah, we're trying to.
How much are various other bonuses we provide? But I know it makes it very hard to reason about the cost of employment when there are so many constantly growing add-ons on top of the base salaries involved. So yeah, that's all I have on this one. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Absentees? Objections? Motion passed. Thank you very much. 6.02. Be resolved that the Board of Education approve the attached provider agreements for the 25-26 school year, including extended school year as recommended by the interim superintendent of schools. These are all the agreements for all of the local schools that are all on the approved list. Yeah, I think, right, Dr. Kennedy, correct? Correct? Yep. So any questions? No? Okay. All right, all in favor?
You need a motion.
Oh, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, abstentions, objections?
I abstained from this vote.
You abstained? Okay. One abstention and motion still passes. Thank you. 6.03. Be resolved that the Carmel Central School District approves the building level emergency response plans for each of the district's five school buildings for the 25-26 school year as recommended by the interim superintendent of schools. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Absentees, objections? Motion passed. 6.04. Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Carmel Central School District hereby approve additions to various reserve accounts in the amount of $5,400,000 as recommended by the interim superintendent of schools. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second, please?
Second.
Okay, I think this is what Ken explained to us in the superintendent's report. I don't know if anybody has any other questions or comments, but it's all very nicely written out for us. Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Absentees, objections? Okay, motion passed. Thank you. 6.05. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the attached memorandum of agreement with the CSEA as recommended by the interim superintendent of schools. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you. So this is what we discussed last board meeting. This is the incentive for getting and maintaining and keeping our bus garage staff and our bus drivers. I think we are all extremely happy about this. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry. Questions or comments?
Thank you.
Vice President?
Thank you.
Curzio?
Thank you. As the President said, we're all very supportive of this. This started off in our facilities committee two years ago, and through some very robust discussions with our transportation officials and with our superintendent and assistant superintendent, we were able to craft the MOA memorandum of agreement before us this evening. And what we are really trying to capture, of course, the bus driver shortage is not unique to the Carmel Central School District. It's something school districts are facing nationwide. And as far as the retention problems, we've seen issues that it's caused with things such as even with transportation to athletic events. And what we really are trying to work, to do here is what can we do to retain the drivers that we currently have? And what would make it easier to hire new drivers? And of course, some of the things that were mentioned were paying for the training that they incur, I think it is, is it, thank you, hours of training for the fingerprinting, background check, which is part of the background check for these employees. And then as far as to try to help retain them, the 5,000, or I'm, I apologize, the $1,000 bonus for staying one year with the district, another $1,000 bonus for staying five years with the district, and just some small things to show that we appreciate our drivers and monitors and that we would like to keep them here in the Carmel Central School District.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Absentees, objections? Great, motion passed, and we're very happy about it. Thank you. Okay. 6.06. Be resolved that the Board of Education approves the memorandum of agreement between the Carmel Central School District and the Carmels Administrators Association to create an MOA for Dean of Students as recommended by the interim superintendent of schools. Can I get a motion?
Madam President, I would actually like to propose a motion to table this resolution until our September 16th, 2025 Board of Education meeting pending some additional information on this.
I second.
Terrific. Okay, so we have a motion on the table to table item 6.06. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Absentees, objections? Okay, motion table to the 16th. Thank you very much. 6.07. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the following contracts for universal pre-K services during the 25-26 school year as recommended by the interim superintendent of schools. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, I, we're just adding St. James. We had approved, I think, five earlier. This is an addition, which is wonderful for our students and community. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Objections, abstentions? Motion passed. Thank you very much. 6.08. Be it resolved that the Board of Education holds the first read, reading of policy 5300, the code of conduct, waives second reading, and hereby adopts policy 5300 code of conduct as recommended by the superintendent of schools. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Again, I know we talked about this briefly. This is just adding some language that is going to be current with the new device policy, and I think there was one other policy that we were updating language.
It was just additional language associated with visitors to the school.
Great. Okay, questions or comments?
Yes.
Trustee Wise.
I note that we're waiving the second reading here. Could you just explain the rationale?
Yes, we are raving the second reading because we have to have a formal code of conduct in place for the first day of school.
And in future years, I'm wondering if there's, if it would be possible to have a red line of the differences from the previous year's code of conduct? I know that.
Of course.
I don't think we should hold this up for that, but I think that's important.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Absentees, objections? Okay, motion passed. Thank you. Okay, 6.09. We're doing it a little different this time. Be it resolved, the attached policies are submitted for your first read. Vote for approval will be at a future Board of Ed meeting. Draft copies of all policies are posted on the board docs. So if you can see, we listed all of the policies, and we're not doing individual motions for each, so I don't need a vote for this, so these are all attached. If there's anything that anybody wants to pull out.
I have a few.
Okay. I'm gonna start with trustee Douglas.
Whoever his idea was to put them all in one rock star, that's great. Nice job.
Okay, trustee Wise.
Well, does anyone, I have questions on several of these, so if anyone else wants to go first.
Well, let's get them done. So which ones should we pull out?
So I just want to start sort of an opening thought here. I know we're making a review through the policies. I do want to thank the policy committee. I know there's a tremendous amount of work involved in this. I do want to make sure, and I've seen Russ do this several times, so I want to express appreciation for that, that where there's a policy and no policy is needed, I'd like to see that go away. Simplification is always welcome, and I certainly stand with Thoreau quoting, paraphrasing John O'Sullivan, who said, "That government is best, which governs least." I think in many cases, we do not need a policy, and just as I see some of these changes, a couple of times, I'll ask what's the rationale for this change now versus leaving where we were. I did want to go look at 1520. I had a couple of comments. If you'll give me one moment to pull this up, I apologize. Here we go. I noticed that, could you just walk through the rationale for this change? This is a change in adding, the district maintains the right to determine the time, place, and manner. I assume that is of speech. Could I suggest that if we're going to include that language, we also include the corresponding language, that any such determination will be made in a content-neutral fashion? I know that that's a strong requirement of both the state and federal constitutions, so calling that explicitly, I think, would reassure a lot of people.
I don't have an issue with it. Could you say that language again, and I will, you know, just put, ask legal to look at it before the second read? Joanne, if you can copy it down?
Yeah, so where it, right after, however the district maintains the right to determine the time, place, and manner, I would add of speech in a content-neutral, in a fashion that is purely neutral to the content of such speech.
Okay.
In a fashion that is purely neutral to what, I'm sorry.
That is purely neutral to the content of such speech.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll try to move quick here, sorry.
Next. Next.
Let me just pull that up. So I notice we state that the purpose of, the gift is an award to a single student. The determination of the recipient of such award will be made on the basis that all students will have an equal opportunity to qualify for it in conformance with federal and state law, which I think is great. I note that we took out the language that all students shall have equal opportunity to qualify and shall not be denied on the basis of race, religion, sex, or disability. I understand that that, there are further categories that are protected by state law, but I think there is value in explicitly listing those categories just as a reassurance to our students. So I'd like to understand the reason to pull that language.
If I can remember correctly, and I might be wrong, but I think there were, I think there were reasons why, because there are, I think it had to
I'm just looking at it, and there just aren't that many classes listed. So I'm thinking if you list some, then
Well, we removed them, but there was a reason we removed them. And I want to say it had to do with, just give me one second, okay? So I can like
Trustee Wise, what policy are you talking about?
1800.
1800, okay.
1800, yeah.
It was implied when we all, so that's why it was taken out by Legal.
No, because remember, it was like, because it could go to
They could go to a girl team. God section, we have, we bring it back.
There was, there was a legal reason we removed it, and I think it had to do with possibly Title IX language, because it doesn't, there are times that gifts can be given to certain, say, sports teams that are gender specific.
Understood.
So that is what I'm remembering, but I don't want to speak out of turn, so I will ask Legal to give you the better
That would be great, and we can just
The better answer.
Yeah, we can just get that in an email, I think, or
Yeah, yeah, I will send this to, yep, Legal and
And there was another concern here. It says that any donation, grant or donation shall provide a value or benefit that is greater than the obligation under the grant award. Now, I'm concerned because that's clearly not true of many grants the district accepts today. I'm going to give an example. We are, discussed tonight, accepting a grant for phone pouches that, on the condition that we make a certain purchase, they will defray part of the cost. Now, if we didn't make the purchase, the grant is in fact conditional on us spending more than the amount of the grant. So it would be, but on a literal reading of this provision, it would be that grant would, many such grants would be prohibited. We have cases where we have two-thirds of a position, of the cost of a position
Can you just tell us where you are in the policy?
Yes. If you look at the red additions at the bottom, number six, under soliciting grants. So just as an example, we have many cases where we hire someone and part of that person's salary is grantable. Now, that grant obviously requires us to hire the person, which costs more than the value of the grant. So that would be prohibited by this item.
Okay, so we're going to, I think, take this back to Legal.
Cool. Yeah, that addresses my concern. Next one, and again, I'll try to go quick here. 1900, I understand is just a language change. I do think that we, if we're revisiting this as well, a lot of this is phrased in terms of what the district expects of parents. I think it might be more welcoming to phrase that in terms of what we empower parents to do. So in other words, rather than saying we expect parents to be partners, I'm paraphrasing, say that we empower them to be partners with us, because this is something, really is our responsibility, even more so than theirs. And I think that would help parents understand that they have a right to be that partner. It's not just that we expected of them.
Some of this language is required when we're accessing any title funds. So this is literally taken from the recommendation from the federal and state when we're accessing it. So we talked about that. That's why we removed the exhibits, because we did, we did talk about the fact that that wasn't, it wasn't supportive, and it was dated.
Cool. So it sounds like we're going in the right direction. 3000, again, I'll be quick here. Just trying to understand the driver for this. It's, doesn't look like, there's some language added about the administration is an essential link in the vertical integration of the district's goals. Maybe I've just worked in corporate America too long that set off my buzzword bingo meter. Could we talk about what drove that?
Yeah, I can speak on that. Two things. So we wanted to align it with the evaluation tool that we're using for administrators, but we also wanted the administrative language to be really focused on the board and the district envision, the vision and mission of the district. And make sure that there's an understanding that, that is working as a team to achieve our mission and our vision. So that's a conversation that we had at the policy committee.
Cool. Thank you. And 3111, just adds numbering to some paragraphs. I don't know if we, yeah, I don't know
We'll do that. So our first reads are, we are trying to be efficient, so we want to, we will clean up paragraphing and everything in the, for our second read.
Yep. 3240, see, I skipped one. It's not all of them.
Oh, that's good.
I'm trying. 3240, there was a, there's a note there about directors, and I know that the original language dated from when our assistant superintendent for PPS was previously a director for PPS. But there's a statement there that the directors report to the superintendent of schools, and I wanted to make sure that's still true. Because I know we talked about in the past about our HR director potentially reporting to the assistant superintendent of business, for example.
That is true. Can you tell me where you are?
Yeah, one second. Let me just, Ctrl F.
Top of page two.
Way ahead of me, thank you.
Assistant superintendents and the directors of pupil personnel.
They'll be responsible to the superintendent.
That's, that's true. They are responsible.
I know, I know they're responsible too, but
For all areas responsibly assigned to them.
But whereas the assistant superintendent's report to the superintendent or evaluated by the superintendent, aren't the directors, in fact, don't they in fact report to the assistant superintendent?
Yeah, indirectly, all reporting. I'll change, we can, can we refine that language
Yeah, I think that sounds great.
For the clarification and not bring it back to policy?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I don't think that has to go back to policy, as long as for the second read, it's addressed, that entirely addresses my concern. Okay, moving quickly here, 3250, we can skip. I just asked, you know, why, why, again, 3250, why 6000, why, and why have this policy at all? I'm wondering if this is a candidate for, given how short the policy 6000 is, I'm wondering if this is a candidate for deletion.
6000, I don't know if we need it or not. Jim, I can ask.
Yep. 6100.
Actually, Trustee Wise, can I just real quick jump in there?
Yeah, absolutely.
The only reason on policy 6000 fiscal management, the only reason that I see a benefit in keeping this is because it added a sentence in there in the first line. So it says, "The Board of Education recognizes that effective fiscal management is crucial to the support for the school program. To make that support as effective as possible, the Board expects," and then number one, "to receive a three-year budget projection to include budget assumptions." Of course, that was something in your first year on the board that you recognized the Board
Well, I strongly supportive of the addition of a three-year.
Had, of prior administrations, had asked and asked for a three-year budget projection, and there was a tremendous amount of pushback, which I think hindered the Board's ability to
Strongly agree.
To be able to perform long-term budgeting. And of course, with our superintendent and our assistant superintendent for business, when they came in, they were able to provide that to us, which greatly assisted us in the budget process this past school year and will assist us going forward. But I do like that in there, because in the future now, this is in policy as an expectation for administration.
No, I strongly agree it should be in policy. It just strikes me that that's, everything else in this policy is a statement of philosophy and very general. I wonder if that shouldn't just be included in the previous policy. Last couple of things here, 6110, we have the word students in red. I guess that replaced a previous pupils or something?
Children, I think.
Children or something. 6120 and 6150, there are no visible changes in the red line?
Nope, we just reviewed them. We were going to, we're doing like an audit, because some of these policies haven't been looked at for several years. So you might not see a change, but that doesn't mean that the policy committee didn't review that.
Okay. I was just curious if that needs to come before the whole board if it wasn't changed?
Well, we want to make sure it's reviewed.
The whole board has to review policies every three years, so yes.
Okay, so if that hasn't been resolved within the required amount. 6240 has to do with the type of investment, instruments, the district
Are no longer allowed to have short-term government securities. It's against the law.
Yeah, so that's, that's updated to catch up with law. Question I had is, I had asked last year for a catalog of what securities the district was invested in, the year before last, I apologize. It was prior to assistant superintendent's term, but I know that, I was told at that time that that information did not exist and wasn't available. That strikes me as unlikely, and I'm wondering if we could, that could be part of our reporting to the audit committee, what, sort of what the fund balance of our, what the investment balance of our district's investments in stocks and bonds is, sort of what securities and what type of risk we're exposing ourselves to.
Let me see if we, if that's allowed to be codified in this, like, I'm not sure if there's legal ramifications, but if it isn't, then
Yeah, I think that would be very useful to have.
Certainly could be an expectation of the Board to have that once a year. Sure.
Sounds great. And there's only one more, 6511.
There's only one more because there is only one more.
That's correct. Hey, I skipped one. You want me to go back?
No, thank you.
So 6511, I noticed there's some language removed around Medicare. Is that catching up with current law, or what's the reasoning for that?
That's correct.
Yep, all updates that we have to put in.
In accordance with law.
Yes.
Yep. And does, so does this change of policy change any, change any rights of our current retirees?
No.
And, and people, and it doesn't change any, it doesn't have any impact on the contractual obligations we maintain when working here now?
Not at all.
So there shouldn't be any objections raised on that front. Thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else for any of these policies? Okay, moving on, thank you, to 6.10. Policies to be deleted. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, Jim, we're deleting policies. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the deletion of the attached policies as recommended by the interim superintendent of schools. Can I get a motion?
So enthusiastically moved.
Second.
Thank you. So we are exactly the reasons, both of these policies, we don't have to have, and they are just, they don't need them. questions, comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, excellent. Motion passed. Thank you. Okay, moving on to old business. I feel like there might be some old business this evening. So I'm going to look this way first. No old business. All right.
Doug, you go first.
Thank you, Madam President. I have two items.
Okay.
First, I'll start off, of course, September 17th is just right around the corner. Everybody knows September 17th. It's Constitution Day.
I know, I know.
Superintendent, no.
Your favorite day of the year.
That's right. So of course, in 2004, President Bush signed Public Law 108-447, Section 111, which requires the following. Each educational institution that receives federal funds for a fiscal year shall hold an educational program on the United States Constitution on September 17th of such year for the students served by the educational institution. And I know that we've done it for the past several years, and I'm hopeful that our district is on track to satisfy the law's requirements this September for the benefit of our students, and of course, a very fun day in our district. For those that are interested, there is still a video on our district's Facebook page showing Matthew Patterson Elementary School, the building we're in, having a lot of fun celebrating Constitution Day, again in 2018, complete with a sing-along with the principal playing the guitar. And of course, there's age-appropriate activities, depending on the grade that the students are in. Of course, the high school is much different than the elementary school, for instance. So
Excellent. Constitution Day.
Yes.
And we'll look forward to hearing what happens in our schools.
Yes, thank you. And then the second one, I'd like to start off, I have a few questions, and then some statements, but it was brought up at our last meeting and of course, earlier tonight regarding the pouches that are used with the new cell phone policy that the Board adopted, of course, in accordance with a law that was passed by the legislature and signed into law by Governor Hochul. So just to get some clarity on the expense of these pouches, what the grant covered, and how many pouches that this involved. So I know that it was a little bit of a moving target at first. I was hoping the superintendent could just provide some clarity on those matters.
Okay. So we, so we received the distraction-free school allocation. So we received, we're receiving 20,000, 20,754. Currently, we are working with BOCs for a cross-contract for the pouches. Their total, our total bill with discounts and everything was 44,240, less the grant, the grant that we are receiving. We have confirmation of it. Of course, we really wanted to, you know, receive more money, but we didn't. So less that, so less the 20,754. The cross-contract with the BOCs that we're working through right now would be 23,486. With our state aid, it'll be under, it'll be 9,159,54.
Okay, thank you. And then just if, and I appreciate those figures, if you could provide some clarification, because I think there's a little bit of confusion, certainly, I'm a little confused by it. So they're purchased, or have already been purchased, but then, so did we have to put the money upfront? So how does that work?
No, they delivered them. We were working through that with them, so we placed an order. And at the same time, we discovered that we could access some discount, some additional discounts, and also some cross-contracting. So through discussion with them, we gave them a, I guess, an ultimatum, and said, we'll either return everything or help us figure this out. And they helped us figure out how to, to give us what we needed within our, what we had available. So we are still working through the cross-contract. Ken Silver's doing that. It will not be with our BOCs. That's why I keep saying cross-contract. So we are going to go with another BOCs that has facilitated this, which is a typical process. So it was great that we discovered that.
Thank you. So it's, the, out of the operating budget of the school district, it's just under $10,000 after everything's said and done?
Yeah. And I did, I mean, I believe it will not be more than what I shared. It could be a lot less than that, depending on, you know, BOCs aid, and so, yes.
Thank you. And then if either you or Mr. Silver could just shed some light, so nine, $10,000 approximately, where in the budget would that come out of?
That comes under our BOCs contractual services. So we allot a specific amount of money for services for BOCs. That includes shared services. It includes cross-contracts, programs, so it'll come out of that allocation.
Thank you. And this is included in the regulation that is associated with the policy that outlines it?
Yes, we are, because of our, because, as I shared earlier, we are, we have mechanisms in place for our elementary and our middle schools. Our high school is different for many reasons. The open campus, students walking from class to class and having book bags with access. We're trying to figure out a way to comply with what our families needed, and also the state law. So we're trying to figure that out, and we'll hope that it works really well.
Thank you. I do have some opinions to share, if that's okay. So first and foremost, I do want to start off by saying, and especially for those that are following school board governance and whatnot, a school board acts in a very similar fashion to a village government, whereas the superintendent is the chief executive officer. The superintendent, just like a village manager, runs the day-to-day operations of the organization, in this case, a school district. The school board, much like a village board, hires and evaluates the CEO of the organization, and also, I think would be fair to say, sets the course. And then the CEO is tasked with navigating the course and reaching the final destination. So of course, we're always looking to support our superintendent or administration. We're all on the same team here, and of course, for those listening, there, I don't want any impression to be given that anybody is tackling our own quarterback, because that's the furthest thing
Am I a quarterback?
That's the furthest thing from any impression I would want to put out there. So of course, I trust our superintendent. I know that you're I know that you're doing what you believe is in the best interest of our students and our school district, and your heart is completely in the right place.
Right.
I do want to share a couple concerns that I personally have. I know some of our taxpayers have, and what I had brought up at our last meeting, some out of our control as a school district, but whatever your thoughts on this law are, and there are some very positive traits of this law to help the educational, or educational system in our school district and for our students, but regardless, the organization that seems to have a monopoly on these pouches was a major lobbyist for this bill. And then, they seem to be the only show in town, and then, which, you know, I guess that's, they're right, they're in business to make money, not lose money, and I don't fault them for that. But when people, I think, see $20,000, or $9,000, or 40, oh, well, I think $44,000 was the overall cost. So I think it's very hard to differentiate between the operating budget and different sources of funding, whether it be BOCs or a state grant, because ultimately, it's still taxpayer money. And I used to say it a lot in my first term on the Board, I haven't said it as much lately, but whether it comes out of the left pocket or the right pocket, it's still coming out of the taxpayer's pocket. That used to annoy a certain former president when I said it.
It does not annoy me.
And just, I think what the concern is sometimes is when taxpayers see an expense like that, that could be an example of what unfortunately could sink a budget or choose somebody to vote against the budget, when they're unhappy with an expenditure where the opinion may be that, well, if they're gonna spend money in that fashion, I don't see why they would need a penny extra or deserve a penny more. There is one suggestion I would make to the Board and to the Policy Committee, I think would be a good step in the right direction, and not just for this. This is just one example, but, so I believe the terminology was multiple resource, multiple resource funding.
Correct.
So, our policies currently do not differentiate between single-source funding and multiple-source funding. So if the Policy Committee could explore, really, I guess, shoring that up for items that may come down in the future, I think would be a positive improvement. I think it would go a long way with building trust amongst our community members and taxpayers, and helping to get in front of any other future questions that people may have. But again, I do want to end with, I don't want anybody to interpret this as an attack on the administration, because it's not. It is, of course, a disagreement with, you know, the pouches, of course, or the funding for them, but that's, that's okay. That's what makes the world go round, different people have different opinions. But again, I would like to ask the Policy Committee to consider that going forward, because again, I think it would be a policy worth having.
I would like to also just state the same as Vice President Curzio, that this is, that his comments are not a reflection at all on our administrative team and their choices, and I think there's a learning lesson, as everything we do in education. And I agree that we should have some policy regarding multi-source funding, and I think it would be a great idea to bring that to the next policy meeting. So thank you, Trustee Curzio, and thank you, Superintendent. And, excellent. Anybody else on this old business?
Well, do you have further old business?
No. Trustee Wise.
Yeah, so, just, I do want to echo what's just been said. I think it is really important when we look at purchases like this through a multi, just that there is the type of board awareness, just because there is the potential for, you know, the actual purchase amount to be large, even, to be large enough to trigger board interest, even if it's, our, the eventual result after all grants and participation by other organizations flow through, that the net impact on the budget may be smaller. From that point of view, what, where in the budget do the pouches come from? Just so people, people are looking for them in the?
It's gonna be under our BOCs services. Like, I shared that it'll be under, it's listed, it actually is noted, and you'll be able to see it there.
That's great. So the people at home following along can look, will be able to look and see what this actually netted out to? That's great.
It's a work in progress, though, because cross contracts take some time.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, it sounds like we can close that sort of knowledge gap by reviewing the total amount, and then, as it gets defrayed by other amounts, obviously, it'll shrink. Other pieces of this, no, so I think that's enough on the phone pouches. Like I said, I do have substantial disagreements with the state law, but that's not something we can resolve in this room. As we've said many times, Albany is that way. Sorry, that way. With that said, yeah, I do think that the laws focused on solutions like these pouches create substantial risk in cases where there was an emergency and students needed access to their phones. I had two questions from previous meetings. We discussed at the last meeting getting an update on the grant, the progress of the grant writer, and sort of how that's turned around for us?
Yeah, I apologize that we didn't put that in the Superintendent's side. So we have a grant writer, actually, we cross-contract with Wayne Figuraleks BOCs. They have been exploring various grants for us, and they're actually gonna be doing a presentation for the Administrative Cabinet shortly, in the next two or three cabinet meetings, on potential grants. They present us a PowerPoint with the grants. We gave them a list of items we were interested in, and incentives, like the records room, like more information on movement rooms, or more grants on movement rooms, social, emotional learning. And they are seeking those out, and will present those to us. So I think we're gonna have like three or four, that we're gonna be updating you on after our meeting with Wayne Figuraleks BOCs.
Great, thank you. And the last question I had, we, in the last two meetings, we had presentations on technologies that would allow us to record committee meetings. Do we have an ETA for when we're gonna start doing that?
Yeah, we were starting it, we said the first meeting's in September.
Beautiful. Thank you so much.
Okay, excellent. Anybody else? Old business. Okay, moving on then. 8.01. Open session, the Board will hear public comment at this time. Is there anybody signed up to speak to us? Is there anybody that would like to address the Board at this time?
I excuse the administrators, because we have to start. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna excuse you. We have a very early morning tomorrow, so Cabinet, you are free to go. I will report back, we will watch Mr. Lee's information, and we will answer any questions he needs. But please leave and see me tomorrow morning.
Since Ken's probably taken off, I just wanted to thank you for clarifying the budget questions, and, you know, where the extra money came from, and also recommending some of the reserves be used for keeping the taxes low. We, as a taxpayer, like to keep these as low as possible. And just one thing real quick about the budgets going forward, you know, this year's budget's $147 million, and you're saying that it might go up 3.2%, which is another $4.4 million, which puts us at $151 million. I know you weren't here, but last February or so, that's what the proposed budget was, and the entire community, or a good portion of the community, was in that high school gym, up in arms about that type of numbers for a budget. So, just giving you a heads up now that that might not necessarily be looked upon too highly, but I understand you gotta do what you gotta do. So, I don't really want to beat a dead horse about the pouches, but I'm gonna jump back to them real quick. As far as I understand, they lock with a magnet, so the kids can't get into them. So, I know, there's not a lot of time, my kids told me, when they were here, there was not a lot of time to get at the end of the day to the buses. So what's the procedure for, like, getting them unlocked and out the door?
Yeah, can I answer? I'll answer that right now.
And I'll just, I'll just throw another one in there real quick at the same time. And then, I guess that's gonna tie into, you know, what if there's a fire drills, the kids all go outside with their phones, but then there's actually a fire, so you can't get back in the building? Now you got however many kids outside with a locked-up phone, how's that gonna work?
We've, we've had that same exact situation with Coats, and we've figured it out with a fire drill. But the, so that was one thing that we were working with students on, because that was a concern. They said, there are times when I don't have a minute, I'm running to my bus. So we're also equipping the buses with the magnets to unlock them. So we have them strategically located, but also on the buses for that, and each of the entrances as well.
Gotcha. Thank you, appreciate it.
And in a true emergency, they can be cut open, which is something that our families felt very strong about, making sure that if there was a true emergency, a fire drill is, you know, a practice, but in that case, they can be ripped open or cut open.
Got you. Appreciate it. You know, earlier I had said about the 50 days off that these guys get, or you administrators get, was about two months. If you really look at it, it's 10 weeks, which is two and a half months, and, and sorry, but really, nobody needs that much time off. And basically, we're just buying it, we're just paying it out at the end, which, whole another story. Anyway, you know, the dual-language program was brought up earlier, and I kind of find it ironic that everybody has fought Jim tooth and nail about getting a translator here, and not necessarily that I'm in favor for it, but I think it's, you know, the reasoning was because it doesn't, you know, serve everyone in the community. There's a handful of others, other languages being spoken, but then, you know, the state mandates a dual-language program, that's gonna end up costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's just mind-boggling. 5.04, the fundraising request. You know, does an RFP go out, or, yeah, an RFP go out for this and the DJ services and all that, or is that just a, you know, somebody in a district, "I know a guy" kind of deal? That's one thing, and then another one, maybe, the staff that supervise it, are they paid for their time, or do they hopefully volunteer? And you can shout this out later in the, in the Board comments if you like. If not, I guess not the end of the world. This one, I kind of would like an answer to, because it goes to a lot of people in the community that don't have kids in the school. Is there somewhere, some way to receive school emails without creating a ParentSquare account? You know?
We do, we have several community members that have requested to receive ParentSquare, and so we do, we do provide that information. We can send out another messenger, put it in the messenger, one of the local papers about being able to do that.
That'd be great. Thank you. So this is kicking around the budget stuff, which I already hit. Last meeting, I spoke about the proctors for the region's exams, and possibly getting some of the lower-paid employees that, you know, give them a shot at the proctoring. So I was just kind of wondering how this was offered and decided, and who gets to, you know, and how it was decided on who gets to proctor the exams.
Some of it is based on certification and knowing the content. Some of it is based on children. So if, if we have a test accommodation that needs to be provided, and the, you know, the teaching assistant or the teacher that is familiar with the student, we try to create optimal opportunity for our students. And so, it's a combination of both.
Great. And I think I asked this a while ago, and I don't know if it's up there yet, but is the pre-K curriculum going to be put on websites so that kid, people that, you know, aren't gonna be sending their kids can kind of get them on the same scores, you know, schedule as everybody else is?
We had a, our first training, so all the UK, UK, UPK, you can tell I'm tired. UPK providers came in last Friday and were trained in the curriculum. So now that we have our hands on it, we're gonna be able to upload that to the website.
Great. I just wanted to touch on that, I, you know, I fully agree with what Trustee Douglas says about limiting Board members' access to places, and, you know, I'm gonna take this right along to something that happens at graduations. You know, teachers jump up on stage and take a picture with their graduate. There's hundreds of parents in the audience that would, you know, like that same opportunity, but they don't get it, so maybe in the future, we could say, hey, you know what, guys? Much as you'd like to do that, it's kind of not fair to the rest of the other community members, when you get that opportunity and nobody else does. Every year, the code of conduct gets rushed through, basically, and skipping through different reeds here or there. We know it's coming every year. Can we possibly, next year, start the process a little early, so that all of the reeds can be done, and people can, you know, weigh in on pluses and minuses of it? That would probably be a good way to go.
Yeah, Jerry, that my goal would be present it in May, have it adopted in June, and ready to go. We were waiting on language from the state related to district-enabled cellphones, and figuring that out, because that was one of the biggest updates. So we were waiting on that, that came out in June. So I apologize, but yes, that should be a normal routine for us, any district.
Fair enough, thank you. You know, my last thing here, I'm gonna wrap it up with, you know, it may annoy some people about Jim and his questions, and I just want to say that I appreciate your questions, because it actually shows that you go over the policy, you read through them, you look at them, you're thorough about it, and, so thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to Board comments. 9.01, Board comments, does anybody have any comments?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, Vice President Curzio.
Thank you. Just a quick point to one of Mr. Lee's questions. Sir, I think you brought up about the three-point, three and change increase in the budget. I just think it's important to differentiate between the budget-to-budget increase and the tax levy increase. So, for instance, this budget that was just passed had a 0.75% tax levy increase. So that 0.75 is levy increase, that's what is, that's what's being collected from our taxpayers here in the Carmel Central School District. That's what was increased. The 3%, so that difference of over 2%, that is, for instance, an increase in state aid, for example. We received more state aid this year than we did last year. And just to give a further example on that, is back in 2021, when we had a contingent budget, and again, was it last year, 2024, when the Board adopted a 0% budget? So those were two years that we had a 0% tax levy. We did not collect more from our taxpayers in those years compared to the prior year, a 0% tax levy increase, but the budget-to-budget still increased because we received more in state aid. So, so that's why the actual budget increased those years, but the actual, the levy increase, what we're collecting from our taxpayers, did not increase. So I just did want to make that distinction.
I do think it's fair to point out, a trustee I know is fond of pointing out that whether it comes out of the left pocket or the right pocket.
That's true, too.
It is still the taxpayers' money. Where the budget increases, there is an opportunity cost in that same money could have been done, used to reduce the taxes of our citizens, many of whom are on, you know, our public, many of whom are on fixed incomes, many of whom, just because we increase by a nominal percent, because we believe it's good policy, doesn't necessarily mean that their ability to pay increases by the same amount.
Oh, I wholeheartedly agree with you, Trustee Wise, you know I do. But I just, I just want to clarify the distinction on why that occurs, because I heard earlier tonight, the 3% number being thrown up, and it kind of conflated with the levy. So I just wanted to bring clarity to that. But, you know, I'm with you 100% on that, and that's why I've voted against some irresponsible big-spending budgets as a Board member. I did want to end with one thing. I recently read, changing gears, I recently read a New York Post article that I want to bring to the attention of this Board and our Superintendent, which I found interesting. The article reported on a New York City Council bill that would mandate lifesaving anti-choking devices in all New York City schools. The article stated in part, "The devices, which can be self-administered and are considered an alternative to the Heimlich maneuver, usually run $50 to $70 each, but Long Island-based LifeVac has offered to supply each New York City school with a device and an instructional video on how they work at no charge." Unquote. It was also reported that LifeVac has donated more than 10,000 devices to schools nationwide. The Post notes that Albany is considering similar legislation statewide, but why should Carmel wait? I think that this is a wonderful and proactive idea. Of course, these devices are a supplement to providing training in properly using the Heimlich maneuver. However, if these devices were to be utilized even a single time to save a child, it's more than worth the investment. So I'd like to ask our Superintendent to look into the possibility of acquiring these devices, which again, could be a no or a little cost to the school district, but could be of great benefit to our entire community.
Excellent.
So, thank you. In the absence of the President, I'll ask, does any other Board In the absence of the President, I'll ask, does any other board member have any board comments?
I, I think I have some procedural comments, questions around the pouches, but I think it makes sense to wait till we discuss that next time. Mostly, coming back to Mr. Lee's points about in an emergency, in an actual fire, I understand that students can break the pouches open. Do they need, they would need a cut-sharp implement or something to cut that with?
Scissors, but again, we have the, I mean, I can, we have to-go bags.
Yeah.
Assuming that the principal will throw one in and run out and be able to unlock them. Might take a little longer, but we...
Yeah, I'm just thinking of a student trapped in a bathroom during a lockdown or similar.
Yeah, that would be, yeah.
Thank you.
Don't have scissors in the bathrooms.
Yeah, so I mean, obviously, it's, we have enough problems in the bathrooms, let's not add scissors. But, you know, definitely, yeah, worth looking into, sort of, as we evaluate our building safety plans, what we do in the case of a lockdown, how we deal with the case that students may be trapped somewhere with their phone in a bag where they can't turn on their location and let people know they're trapped there.
Very good point. Trustee Douglas? Trustee Grasso? Trustee Magliano?
Good.
Okay. At this time, I would like to ask the board to entertain a motion to recess into executive session for the purpose of receiving legal guidance on matters exempt from open-meetings law, matters that would jeopardize public safety of disclosed, and the employment history of a particular person. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Grasso. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you, everyone. Good night. We will not be coming out for any further business, and we will see you all on September 16th.
Thank you for closing up. I'll meet my friend.